Good evening, welcome to our school committee on November 3rd, 2022. I think I'm supposed to do that now, and we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If folks could remain standing for just one second, I'd like to have a moment of silence tonight. Our school community, we just lost one of our retired educator Hall of Famers, Judith Hillner. She passed last Wednesday. She's probably one of the, you know, fifteen or sixteen we have in the Hall of Fame to date. And she passed at the time of our induction of peaking cannon in the Educator Hall of Fame. So a moment for Judith Hillner, who taught an entire career at Franklin and Atkinson School. Thank you.
First on the list is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, come on up and state your name and address.
So my name is Courtney Pham, and my address is 544 Foster Street in North Andover, of course. So I'm here on behalf of my employee, Ashland Farms. And we just wanted to give recognition to a few principals, if that's okay?
Sure.
We had Richard Cushing, the Kittredge Principal. He went above and beyond, and we were able to bring our residents to his, the book character. He had the kids, you know, dress up as a book character, their favorite book character. And so my residents were able to take the bus, and we were able to see the kids go outside and, you know, just wave to them. And my residents were so happy, so I just wanted to give, you know, a thank you to him. And then to Tiffany Godard. She tried to make it happen, but the day we couldn't do it. But we plan on doing something else with her, but I just wanted to give her a shout out, too. And also Kerry Perry, the North Andover High School Wellness Teacher. She brings the kids, the high school kids, to Ashland Farms. And the six that she brings up to my memory care unit are fantastic on Fridays. Like, they are so good with the residents, and we're actually going to do something together for November 18th, together with the kids for CPAC, so. Yeah, but I just wanted to give a shout out to that because they deserve to be recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, we will move on to consent items. We have approval of minutes for October 13th.
So I'll move that we approve the minutes for October 13th and October 20th, as presented in the packet.
Okay. I didn't know we could do both together. Thank you. Is there discussion? And then are we ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Bietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, and moving right along to our student representatives' report. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben, as you know. There's a, to get started with our report, there's a North Andover Special Education Parent Advisory Council info meeting on the 25th. And then there's a fundraiser on the 18th. And there's also Parent Advisory Council volunteer opportunities this coming year. There is Honor Society Blood Drive tomorrow. I believe it is full, which is great news. There was a unified basketball game, the last home game yesterday. It was a win over Tewksbury. And there's Jamboree coming up next week. But aside from that, the season's about to end. I was personally a part of the team as a partner, and it was a great season. Most sports are in playoffs. JV and freshman seasons are mostly over. Varsity football against Danvers is today. Field hockey is also today. Girls and boys soccer is tomorrow. Girls volleyball is Saturday. And then the Thanksgiving football game against Andover is on the 23rd of November. Student Council Food Drive is from now until the 22nd. It's in support of Lazarus House. There's also a turkey teacher incentive going around the high school where kids can nominate a teacher as they donate food. And on, I believe, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break, that teacher will have to come in and dress up as a turkey. Such is a fun thing to go along with the food drive. There is the scholarships for college launch on February 1st. But there are outside scholarships that have already launched, and those will be from now until the end of the year. There was a guidance newsletter that came out, I believe, today, that kind of detailed each one of those scholarships. So there's a lot of, lot of money to go around towards college. The quarter also ends tomorrow. I personally am surprised. These just went by so fast. I think most of the student body has thought that it's been a pretty positive quarter. Definitely hard, especially with the new attendance policies and the new tardiness policies, but I think it's been pretty successful. I personally have enjoyed it. Highlights have certainly been homecoming and the Spirit Week. It's been a good quarter. Hard, but, but good.
Thank you. For those of you I haven't yet met, my name is Nora Elkadiji. I'm a senior. And since the last time we met, in-person college visits unfortunately ended. And a lot of us seniors have met our first early action deadline, so I think there's been kind of like this relief over my class, at least. And then finally, homecoming was two Fridays ago, which was very successful, I thought. The student body seemed to really enjoy their time. And just to shout out the DJ really quickly, was Senior Jimmy Nguyen in my class. And I thought he did a good job of really pertaining to like the students' tastes, and I thought everyone just really had a great time. As for what's coming up at our school, we have the Shorts Fest from today to Friday at seven in the Nas Auditorium. I know there's five or six plays directed by students, and just again to quickly shout them out, we have Beth Lane, Mar Haron, Chloe Goldman, Jan Alicia, Jacob Nevins, Gina Ballow, Sam Chitik, and Greg Roche. Speaking of the drama guild, this year's school play will be The Addams Family, which I've heard a lot of buzz about. And auditions are starting to begin. There's a fall band concert on the ninth. And then finally, there's a Decca Mau competition on November 17th, which I partook in last year. And so I'm glad that our school's offering kind of like a preparation session to the competition, because I know it was pretty intimidating the first time I went. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have questions? We'll start with Ms. Picard.
Yeah, can you tell me, what is the change in the attendance policy, and what does that feel like for you guys?
So the biggest change, I think, has been since COVID. At least last year, it was definitely pretty loose. There was a lot of kids in the hallways, a lot of kids skipping class. And this year especially, Assistant Principals Mr. Jackson have really cracked down on kind of just being in the hallways, leaving school early. So I believe it's a couple of tardies can equal an absence. Leaving class early is a lot more heavily punished this year. So there's that course reduc-, or credit reduction for courses. And definitely, like I said, hall monitors. Mr. Hennessy, I believe, is very adamant about not leaving early, not leaving class, so, yeah.
So does it feel like your, your time on task is positively impacted?
Yeah, I think there's a lot less kids in the hall, a lot less, a lot more kids in class than, than in previous years since COVID. I think it was a problem that kind of started during COVID and, and last year after COVID. But since then, I think Assistant Principals and Mr. Jackson kind of reel it back into what it was before with kids actually being in class.
Thank you.
Ms. Bietzke?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
Just one quick thing. I mean, I, I know you both highlighted it, but I think almost every other year that I've kind of been here, I've heard of homecam-, homecoming being canceled. Just, you know, lots, not necessarily, you know, every year, I guess, but, you know, poor attendance, you know, and, and just not selling even, you know, enough tickets to kind of pay for the, the DJ and all that. And I think this year there was something like 900 students who went, which was absolutely packed and fantastic. And I think, you know, I, I don't know if it was just kind of coming out of COVID and just kind of wanting to feel festive and celebrate and do all of those type of things, but I really hope that that's something that continues, because I think it's a really fun event, and I think you guys kind of deserve to have a lot of good things to celebrate. So I hope you went and enjoyed yourselves and danced hard and all that, so, thank you.
I don't really have any questions. I thought it was really great to hear that, and the, a student was the DJ. How fantastic is that? And I hope that you had a great time. Nora, I hope your college application process is going smoothly. And I'm always just so impressed with your delivery and your knowledge of what's going on and how smoothly and clearly you guys express what's happening in the school. So thank you for another great job. You are welcome to stay and you are welcome to go.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Last finals tomorrow.
That's right. Okay, Ms., Dr. Gillian, I think it's, I think it's your turn. I think you're up.
Outstanding. So a few things tonight in the superintendent's report. We are going to start with our special invited guests, the North End of a CPAC. And I am going to have Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bakuzzi, introduce our folks here tonight, who are going to come up and speak to CPAC, CPAC awareness, all the great things happening. And we're thrilled to have them here, so welcome.
So Courtney, our longtime chair is going to speak, and she is happily, can introduce the rest of her board, which I say that with very much happily, because that has been a long time coming for her. So I'll give her the honor of being able to do that. This group has worked super hard, so some nice things on the horizon and some continuation of some things that I've already started. So I will give them the floor and let them speak, all right?
Well, hello. I'm Courtney Pham, the head chair of NAC PAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And this is actually my last school year, being the head chair. But I'm excited because the new board that's going to be, that is working with me now, is going to be awesome next year, and I'm excited. So without further ado, let me introduce you. So this is Sasha. She's the vice chair. And this is Megan. She is the secretary and also our social media guru. She's awesome. And also Rachel. She is the Education Resource Chair. So, so yes. So our CPAC is a nonprofit parent organization, and it's parent-run. And we advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. Meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs. And in October, I was really happy Sergeant does the Fun Run. And I always like to work with Ms. Cloud, the Medical Fragile Program. She has always had a soft spot in my heart and amazing, amazing person in general. They all are. That team's amazing. So we, yep, so we took a few pictures. The, the best part about this, so we actually moved it. So first off, Sergeant PTO is amazing. They worked with us, and they, they're always, last year they were awesome, and this year they were even more. So we moved the Fun Run off where the basketball court was. I mean, we moved it to the basketball court, because we found when the kids were lining up to leave, it was just too chaotic. And then the circle for the kids just wasn't working. So we moved to the basketball court, which worked out awesome. And we had the fifth graders, my daughter's class, cheer them on, and they made all these signs. And then the first graders, all of a sudden, started to join. And just seeing that role model, you know, like seeing the first graders like cheer on with the fifth graders, it just was very like a beautiful, beautiful moment. But it was, it was a great day, and we are, instead of giving them medals like we did last year, we are going to work with Ms. Cloud to get each of those children something that would work better for them. So, yep. And exciting news, so something I've always wanted to do, and now with this awesome board, I'm able to do it. Sasha worked really hard, did the grunt work for me, and I'm really appreciative of that. We got, we went to the select board, and we got CPAC Awareness Day proclaimed in North Andover. Every third Friday in November, right? Am I wrong? Okay. And really exciting, because it's something I've always really wanted to do. And now we're starting it this year, which is awesome. And we actually got a CPAC flag. That's just our logo, and it's going to be in the North Andover Commons. And so it's really exciting. I'm so excited. We're not sure just yet.
Yeah, we're waiting on PTA. Close COVID flag production is quite lengthy. So I actually reached out to the vendor this morning just to see if we can expedite things, but it should be here, you know, in the next couple of days, and then we'll get it right up on the, on the common. And we'll hope to see that every November going forward.
That's awesome.
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 Yep, and then November 18th is our official NAC PAC Awareness Day. So.
Forty-two t-shirts.
Yes. And teachers, if teachers want to wear our logo, you know, or whatever they want to do, or anyone in general, yellow shirt, amazing, so, really exciting. And also, I just going to reach out to the art teachers, asking if maybe they can do an in-school art project to celebrate inclusion during that week of November 14th and November 18th, because then it can just collide altogether. So I think that would be really good for first graders to, to high school. And also, the high school kids that come to Ashland Farms are going to be doing something with my residents for CPAC awareness as well on November 18th. So I'm working with Kerry Perry with that, so I'm excited about that.
So some of the other kind of fall happenings that we have going on is we have an NAC PAC Take-Two-Over-High Street event that we're really excited about. So we've partnered with four restaurants in the Mills, and they're going to be donating a, a portion of their proceeds for that night to the North Andover CPAC. We're also going to be utilizing the West Mill Courtyard. We've worked with RCG, the landlord of that property, to take kind of over that area, which is really, really exciting. So between five and eight, we'll have a booth that has literature about what is a CPAC, so people that are curious can come and, and learn about what is a CPAC, what does the North Andover CPAC do. In addition to that, we're going to be having a local raffle with baskets and other gift cards sponsored by local businesses in North Andover. And Be Designed, Rachel Bedard, who many of you know, she's a wonderful resource for our community and partners with a lot of PTOs and organizations. She's donating 25% of her profits of her shirt sales to the North Andover CPAC. So she has two designs. You can see a yellow North Andover shirt that's tie-dye, as well as the CPAC logo shirt. You can order those on her website, be designed apparel dot com. She'll also be at the West Mill Courtyard on November 15th, making regular North Andover gear, that she's also going to be donating a percentage of those sales to North Andover CPAC. And you can purchase another yellow shirt, if you'd like, to wear on November 18th for the Wear Yellow Day throughout the district. So we're really excited about those events. Some of the things we wanted to talk about is kind of parent advocacy and what we've been able to accomplish thus far in 2022. So the first is the Basic Rights Presentation. Huge thank you to Holly for supporting us and, and holding that presentation. We had sixteen families, or sixteen people, you can't really tell it's virtual, right? If they're, if they're two parents or one, but different people attend the Basic Rights Presentation, which, for those of you who are watching, is also on the slide. It's required by law to be held annually in each district in the Commonwealth. And it, it provides an overview of special education rights and, you know, among other things, which is critical for our parents, and it was really well attended. And thank you so much to Holly and also to board members Rachel and Meg, who, while Courtney and I were at the Select Board meeting, held on the fort and participated in that. And especially Rachel, with her knowledge of special education, participating and, and helping facilitate that. It was really wonderful. We really appreciate it. The next item that we have in terms of parent advocacy is our 2022 Parents Survey. Thank you. So the, the NAC PAC board felt it was prudent to survey district families on their experiences, so we can better provide resources and programming for those families. Without hearing from them, we can't, we don't know what do these parents need, what do our families in the district need? And so the survey is really to help facilitate that. It'll be distributed in the next few days. It'll be distributed in both English, and it was, Marcy, thank you so much for your help with this. It was translated into Spanish, so both will go out to families. And they'll be given approximately thirty days to complete the survey. And we really look forward to coming back and communicating those results to the school committee.
Super quick, who develops the questions for that? Is that just questions you have, or is it required by, questions by law, or?
Not by law, however, we're really fortunate to have a board member with a master's degree in special education that works in another district in this industry, so.
I put it out to other resources in other districts throughout the state. Sorry. So I actually reached out to people that I know in other districts in the state and through PAC2PAC, which is a resource for all the CPACs across the state, collected multiple surveys, and then kind of tweaked it and tailored it for our district and kind of the population that we have in our breakdown. And then most of it was more just your experiences as parents going through the process.
Awesome, thank you.
No problem.
And I think we'll be able to see how effective that survey is and what other questions we may want to ask or how we want to proceed after we get the results. So a brief financial update. Historically, the North Andover CPAC has had limited funding. Courtney, being the board for a long time and having a limited board member, there's only so much one person can do. Obviously, we're trying really hard to rectify our financial position by holding significant fundraisers and other events. But I wanted to put this up there, and the board and I talked about it and thought it was really prudent, because one of the things that we hope in the future, and we can, we'll talk about it in the next slide, is coming back to the administration and to the school committee and talking about potentially having some funds allocated in the budget for the next fiscal year for CPAC. And then we can, with fundraising and with that allocation, build a really comprehensive programming for the next year. So looking forward, Courtney can talk about a little bit about the, the first two points.
So the parents' survey presentation, so once we get all the data from the surveys, then we can present, and we can look at it together. And also, the 2023 parent programming is the Sale Foundation Simulation. That is something that's very, sorry. So it's a simulation of you can actually, for parents or teachers or whoever wants to actually go to this, and you can try to kind of feel like how it is for your child to have dyslexia or autism, or it just, it puts you into that, and it's something very near and dear, and I think it should be brought to North Andover. And other CPACs have said that if we wanted to go in on with them, and we can all do it together, or we can just do it for North Andover, but it's something very, that I want to bring to North Andover.
So I think, you know, we're really excited about continuing to discuss that and, you know, other programming once kind of the next bullet, a budget presentation, to tie that to our goals. So if we, you know, as we work as a board and get feedback from the parents in the district to understand what their needs are and what kind of programming they'd like, they'd like to see, we can, we can find the best resources, and then, you know, back into kind of what does that look like financially for North Andover CPAC, and how can we, you know, what are the sources of those funds? And we'd love to work on that and then present it to the administration and the school committee. In addition to that, kind of the last bullet is special education audit discussion. So I think we, as a board, really want to thank the school committee and the administration for discussing the idea of a special education audit. We, you know, I guess urge and are, urge you and are excited about the idea that we could do that as a district and really take a comprehensive look at special education programming and what things we may be doing really, really well, and what things that maybe, you know, are areas of opportunity. I think it's also important to consider, you know, the involvement of CPAC in that and how we can be a resource to, as representatives of families that have children that are disabled, and how we can really partner through that. And I also think that, you know, it would be interesting to consider using ARPA funds to perform that audit more quickly and not have to wait until the next budget season, so that that work, at least the audit portion, could get performed more immediately, so that we weren't kind of waiting to get the results from that in the next budget season and then have to wait again to implement what was found through that audit. So.
And then our next, next, okay. Our next NAC PAC meeting is December 5th, and it will be virtual. And I'm excited for it, because we're going to, you can, if you want.
So as of now, one of the things that we're going to do is, we had discussed in the last meeting, having representation from the individual buildings, so the ETLs are directors. If they're available to attend, we'll do elementary, preschool and elementary on the 5th, and then middle school, high school on, I think it's March 8th, something like that, I think, March-ish. So they'll be there to just talk about, like, the different programmings that are in their building. So they'll be there to represent their schools?
Yes, I'll be, go ahead. I'm happy about it. But we're looking forward to working with Marcy this school year and the school administration, school committee, and just excited to be here and, you know, that we have a good relationship with you guys, because not all CPACs do have a good relationship with their school administration and school committee. So I am very thankful that we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some questions, maybe?
I, I do have a question.
Okay.
More of a comment, perhaps, but you are probably aware that Napren has really re-energized. That's the North Andover Parent Resource Network. So as you gather your information from your surveys, I hope that you'll collaborate with them so that we have, you know, really unified programming that's being offered across the board. I know they recently did something on ADHD. They've done stuff on anxiety in the past, so, you know, I hope that those, those two groups can work together.
So Lisa actually comes to our NAC PAC meetings, and also I attend her, her meetings as well.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions, but comments, which I've told you before, it's just so, it's so exciting to see you guys so energetic and breathe new life into the CPAC. It's, you know, obviously near and dear to my heart, so it's so nice to see Courtney. You've done a fabulous job carrying it on, and like Sasha coming behind her. It's, this is fantastic, so I love to see that. And then I was telling the people on the presentation last week that I had done Haverhill the night before, and I did North Reading last night, and North Andover was by far the most attended one. And it usually is Haverhill. Haverhill usually gets a, draws a big crowd, but yeah, it was really, really great to see. So keep up the great work. I love it.
Thank you.
And just to comment, sorry. Meg, kind of doing the social media has been incredibly effective, I think, in that participation rate, because we're really utilizing Facebook and other avenues to get parents and in front of them all the time. It's been really great, so, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, a few questions. Thank you so much. Super excited to wear my shirt on the 18th. I will not be able to go on the 15th. I'm sad about that, but I will. I'll definitely be wearing my shirt on the 18th. And I think I understand why, because just for the, those who are watching at home, so we can have it officially in the record. The Fun Run at Sergeant, can you tell us a little bit about, like, the students that participated in that and like why we do it there, and why that's such a wonderful moment, because it's amazing, but just so we can have that.
Yeah, of course. So, so they have, for the first and fifth graders, the Fun Run. And for the Medical Fragile Program, they can't go on the, the grass, really. So they have it on the, the cement part. And to be honest, when I first came here, I moved here, my neighbor, her daughter was in the program. And when I went there to cheer my daughter on, on the Fun Run, no one was cheering her on. And so that's why it's near and dear to me. I want, sorry, she passed away, so it's a little emotional. So I'm doing this in her honor, but that's why it's near and dear to me. And Ms. Cloud took my daughter in and saved my daughter, basically, when she lost her friend. And so, but the reason why I want to do this is because those kids- Um, and so, but the reason why I want to do this is because those kids deserve to have that support that, because some parents can't go, because some of them are out of district. So it's, and they have jobs, like they can't go to it. So my goal was, well, I want those parents to know that their kids are gonna be cheered on. So then I talked to my daughter's teachers in fourth grade and I said, can we do this? And all of a sudden, instead of just my daughter's fourth grade class, it turned into the whole fourth grade. And it was beautiful last year. And then this year, the fifth grader's like, no, we want to do it again. So then they came again and then to see the first graders. And just to see that maybe every year this could happen, if I'm not there. I know that I did my job and that Eva's looking and she's proud to know her classmates are gonna have a cheering squad.
Thank you so much. I think it's just really important that we, that program that we're there, like sometimes we don't always know that it exists.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, and it's such an important program and so important that we like recognize like the ki, other kids giving them support. So thank you so much for that.
Definitely.
Um, small question on the survey. Um, happy to see it's going out in Spanish. Do we need to make sure it goes out in any other languages, um, Portuguese or whatever? Are we, that's, we're good?
I think we'll start that. We're gonna start there. We have, um, we have other translation companies based aid for translating. Um, and they're significantly behind on some of their translation process, but we can certainly get that to anybody that needs to be, so we can expand that as needed.
I wonder if we could all, sorry, just thinking aloud, we could also put something like contact hello@northendovercpac.com, which plug if anyone wants to contact us, that's our email address. Um, then we could put that, we could put that on there and if they, and specifically say like if you need us translated.
You'd have to translate the translation request. Just saying.
Well, but that's short, maybe we can.
Yeah, that one you might be able to Google translate.
We can talk about it, not a whole lot as I look through the survey. There's not a whole lot of technical language in there too. So a lot of times in translate, with translations, we, we stare away from doing like Google Translate or something like that. But I think in this case, again, there wasn't a ton of technical language there, so we might be able to do something like that too.
Thank you. Um, special ed audits. Um, just so we know for clarity, um, how would this be different than another equity audit? Like why would it be necessary to do the, uh, this in particular? What would, like what, why would it be better for us?
Well, I think that, I'm not an educator, so I think, I mean, I'm sure there's people who can answer this better, but I might, my thought process is that, um, the, the, the people, the, the folks who would, uh, be equipped to audit special education are vastly different than the people that would be looking at other things and other audits. And then I'm not sure, I know, I, I watch the school committee meetings. I mean, you, part of the superintendent's goals is an equity audit. I'm not sure the scope of that and what that is compared to the other audits you're looking for. And, um, this is a big, it's separate and distinct and kind of a chunk, I think you could, it could, it's required and, you know, it's, it needs to be done and could, could get done more easily, especially with, um, a funding source that is immediately, more immediately available. Um, that would be my perspective. But I am speaking personally, we haven't really discussed that at length. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but how Marcy's are.
So I think it was probably the first or second school committee meeting, Andrew, you brought up an audit. So since that time, we have, we, there was a question that was posed here. Um, so since that time, we have been looking into, um, places to complete that audit. Um, in the past, the last hu, you know, pretty significant audit we did was that Walker report, which was quite a while ago. Um, so we have, we, we reached out to those specific individuals. The, the Walker portion is, Walker is no longer an actual thing that happens, that report, but the people who did that report still exist. So, um, I, we've had some initial discussion with them, um, because it would be nice, again, they did an initial, um, six years ago and to look at things currently. Um, so we are, um, they're part of another agency now, so we've been having some initial discussions with them. It's a significant undertaking, so it, and it has significant budgetary, um, conversations that we have to have, so.
Yeah, typically it's a different scope, right? Because like we've had the Walker report, we've had, um, you know, we've had a couple consultants over different superintendents, you know, prior to me being here. We've also had folks have to look at and review every year what we have and what the needs are. Especially it's really important too, because the needs, they add, they change over time and we have different cohorts over time and we have different cohorts that travel. And, you know, one of the things people always say is, one of the reasons I moved to North Andover, it's not, it's not, I hear it a lot, is they'll say, you know, I was in this community and moved here, um, because of special education. And it's, that really started, I mean, years and years ago, I think Franklin had one of the first, um, uh, at the time it was called Autism Programming, um, that we had, that we had had in the region, um, right? And then what happened? We said, oh my God, we gotta build more capacity and we want to keep North End of kids in North Andover. And we've built more capacity and we continue to do so. And it's, um, been really successful in a lot of areas. But it's always good to put a, a set of eyes on staffing, programming, need, disabilities, all of these different things, because it's really critical, um, as we grow. Because there are some things we can do well, um, and others that we have to look at is, you know, who else might we partner with, innovative partnerships? Like last Friday, I was at TOP for two hours in Andova. Um, you know, so as we do those things, that's really important why. Um, and make sure we have the appropriate staffing, uh, materials, et cetera.
And I think, Joe, to your question about, uh, why special education audit versus equity audit, right? I think, uh, as you said, Dr. Gilligan, the needs in special education are incredibly fluid and they're incredibly individualized. So it's a constant change, right, every few years? And you want to be built for change. And that is incredibly challenging in public schools, uh, when everything is driven by individualization. Uh, so I think constantly having that in the rotation every few years, it helps, it, um, fuels a stopgap too for where money, maybe we're hemorrhaging that we don't even know. Like you said, keeping kids in district, how do we keep kids in district? How do we get kids from other districts? Is that a source of funding? You know, it's, it just takes a look at very specifically special education and how we can serve our population best and save money ideally. And then, you know, what I've been looking at is independent contractors, because it's really tough to find a group, as you said, and there are, you know, we luckily have access to some of the best hospitals in the world who do have pretty high performing neuropsychological teams. They do evaluate programmatically in different districts and privately. Um, I would, you know, ask Attorney Lynch her opinion on that and, and, you know, just in the special education world, that's one avenue to consider. Um, just having worked with a few of them, they, they do have that capacity. So just another avenue that I would suggest.
Last question, um, about funding, um, ARP. Um, that is money that we, the town has through the federal government. Um, I guess this is more for Dr. Mealy, is that, is there like, is there a way to you to partner with the town side to use those funds for an audit? Is that a possibility, so to sort of speed up our normal budgetary process when those funds might already be in the bank?
One of the unknowns we're finding, especially like with the ARPA money, is what it can be used for. Um, so I guess the best answer is it wouldn't hurt to ask.
I mean, given, just given kind of the, the array of items that have been approved by the select board thus far, I feel like that would be right in line with, with what they're doing. I think, and you would know much better than me, but, um, there is some threshold, like if you only receive some amount of money, right, doesn't open up the possibility, the restrictions are, are less stringent. So, um, that was some of the research I found, which you would obviously, again, know, much better. But, um, I think that was our thought and bringing it up again is that potentially, you know, um, it's a discussion point that we could have going forward and would love to be, uh, the CPAC would love to be part of that process if possible, um, because it's obviously something that we are very passionate about.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate all of your energy and Courtney, for all the work you've done over the past few years and the new, the new members, uh, that, that's gonna carry this forward. It's really important for families like mine to know that we have strong advocates, um, working on their behalf. So I really, really do appreciate you and your work, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna echo that. Um, I remember first meeting Courtney and I, I'm pretty sure we were virtual, um.
Yes, this is the first time I've been in person.
Yeah, and I remember thinking, wow, if she's got this amount of energy over a Zoom meeting. I'm sorry?
At nine o'clock at night sometimes.
Yeah, nine, yeah, exactly.
But just imagine, that's my energy and now I have all these lovely ladies.
Well, that's point number two.
Right.
So now that like we've unleashed the Zoom, right, you're able to recruit, um, four ama, I'm sure more, but at least four amazing, uh, people to help and kind of join the board. So thank you very much for kind of picking up the torch.
Thank you.
And, you know, I think one of the challenges, and I know you're not done yet, but it, anytime you're doing something, your ability to kind of leave it better than when you started, right? And I, and I think that that is gonna absolutely be part of, um, I don't want to say your legacy, but, you know, in a way, your legacy. So thank you and welcome to the, to the rest of the board members. Um, I think one of the amazing things is there are always so many families who have some challenges with what's going on in their individual home and they don't know that there are other families that they can reach out to and talk to and get advice or suggestions and bounce those ideas off, because they think it's just my kid, right? And, and I don't necessarily know or understand that. So the role that you play in that is so crucial, I think, to our community and I think makes our education, um, better, um, as a result of that. And I, and I, I loved hearing about the Fun Run, I can't speak, Fun Run at Sargent and how the kids, you know, clearly wanted to kind of contin, continue that. And then the first graders kind of picking up, um, that as well and, and hopefully that kind of grows. And, and that's just, um, truly amazing. Um, when, and I know this, uh, oh yeah, the slide is up there. So the SEAL, um, foundation, that's more geared towards parents, correct?
Yes, it's actually my, um, cousin's foundation. And what she does is she provides, um, advocacy for parents. And, but now it's grown where there's workshops, there's resources. So it's not just for advocacy, but she, um, it's like, you're paid throughout the whole, whole time you ever need an advocate, which is really nice. But it's not just for that, it could just be, you know, it kind of just helps them to let them know, like what's the next step for them.
Okay.
Yeah. They really do, yeah. They work with Catholic schools, non-Catholic schools, it's, it's really nice. Like all the work my, they're doing right now is amazing.
So the reason I was thinking about it when you were talking about how a parent wouldn't understand what it's like for their own child to, um, read with dyslexia or, you know, something else of that nature, um, I was thinking of understanding our differences. And so I was wondering how much you partner with them? Because this is, this seems to be very geared towards parents. Understanding our differences seems very geared towards the students and how much overlap is there? And, and the more overlap, the better, I think. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be overlap, but I just think, you know, can you join forces to a degree and, um, help each other?
I actually didn't even think about that and shame on me because, I mean, Marcy, I'm, not Marcy, Maureen, she comes to our meetings, so I'll bring it up to Allie Mueller, I didn't think about that.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Just a thought, I mean, I think, you know, it's all about awareness. And whether I'm sitting next to a, a student in my, you know, if I were a student, you know, understanding that, but for that, those other parents to understand that as well. So, um, I think that that's great. Um, Mr. Hicks asked my questions, um, about the ARPA funds, so I think that that's great. And just again, thank you so much for what you do, uh, such a valuable asset.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna just echo what my, uh, colleagues have said and just really, truly thank you from the bottom of my heart. Um, my family, my younger brother is, um, a significant learning disability and I watched my parents my entire life and still struggle, um, with advocacy and with understanding their rights and his rights and never had a CPAC. And I know that it would have made the world of difference. My mom knocked on doors and went to school committee meetings and asked teachers and principals and just, you know, this is whatever, twenty, thirty years ago, but, and, but still struggle now to find resources that they need. So the work that you're doing for the families who have the highest needs in our community is so invaluable. So thank you all for what you're doing. Courtney, thank you for all the work. Your passion and your empathy just oozes out of you and, and I just so appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and the rest of your board, you're, it sounds like you're really gonna take this to the next level. And how fortunate is our community to have such devotion and commitment to our families with the highest needs? Um, and don't ever say shame on me for not thinking of something, that's what these meetings are for, for collaboration. You cannot work in isolation. And so when you talk and share, that's when beautiful things happen, right? That's when we collaborate and share ideas and make good thing, make good work happen. So take that off your list, right? Like, no.
Thank you, Pam.
Because this is truly though, I truly mean that, you know? Um, and I, I do, that empathy experience, like I'm thinking of, and I don't want to go off on a huge tangent, but a cou, few years ago, working in another district, we had a very kind of similar experience as a PD. Because I'm a multilingual teacher, we had, um, a teacher come in and speak to us in Russian. And so all the bilingual teachers who spoke Spanish, we all sat there on the same playing field. He came in, he just started talking, barking directions at us, nobody knew what was going on. We were all just kind of looking at each other like, what do we do? And then he started scaffolding the lesson and we all kind of understood. And it was such an eye opener for what our students experience. And so I think that is something that our teachers need, that is something that our families need, even the parents who are working with these kids that might be frustrated and be like, oh my God, why aren't you doing this? Because they can't and they don't know how, right? Um, so I just, I really hope that we are able to make something like that happen amongst our entire community. Um, brings me back to the conversation we had at the last meeting about, um, the American Sign Language and Braille. That's the same kind of bringing awareness and empathy amongst everybody, because we all need a little bit more of it. So I'm gonna get off of my soapbox and thank you again.
Dr. Gilligan.
I just wanted to say, Courtney, um, I'm so thrilled to see other people with you tonight.
Me too.
Again, your passion, your energy, your enthusiasm, um, during a time that was the most challenging in the history of the earth, or in our lifetimes anyway, was inspiring.
And then Marcy and I starting at the same time, during that.
And so a couple of things I think are really unique here in North Andover, right? Like we have tremendous partnerships with community groups and groups here in the schools and there are tremendous resource to people. And I know that I've personally been promoting you folks with all the different PTOs. And the reason that it's so important to do that is because I think a lot of folks don't realize, you don't have to have a student on a 504 and IEP to join the CPAC.
Yeah.
And so it's like, usually best practice is best practice. So whether you have a, an IEP or whether you're a regular student, you know, our experience typically best practice is best practice. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I think the other thing too, that we talked, I talked about when I was with all the PTOs last month, is a little bit to echo what Mr. McDevitt said, right? Like, none of us really truly know what other shoes people walk in, right? And so Naprin is one of our tremendous partnerships, uh, that works really closely with Maureen. And Brabham or Maureen working with, you know, Lisa Roberts and Marcy and, and the head of CPAC. What an unbelievable relationship. But when we talk about people who are isolated at home, oftentimes we can think of things and say, there's a stigma to it or like, we're all alone in this. And even if ten people go to a meeting, even if it's four people, it's another network that parents have that they can have a friend, that they can connect with, that they can talk about these things with, right? And some of these topics, whether they're in special education or mental health or substance use, whatever it is, you know, they're all in families everywhere. And like, so the Naprin, the CPAC, the understanding our differences, the youth services, the North End of a Police Department and some of the outreach they do, all these things and partnerships are just amazing. So I'm thrilled that you have folks with you, um, and you got a long way to go. You're not, like, this is only Oc, well, it's November now, we're November. And, and thank you, um, again for keep, you know, you send me stuff and it's great because we get it right up on our website through our Twitter account. So, um, anything you have, uh, keep sending and just congratulations on, uh, getting a, a group of folks with you with the same passion, so.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just add, it's so great, I, I would thank the administration as well, um, because you all being open to this kind of input and being helpful, like, you know, things are out on Facebook, but not everybody's on Facebook, right? So if it's also on our website, I just think it really makes a difference and I, I appreciate what the administration is doing to support parents and students as well.
And kudos to Marcy, I have to say kudos to you too.
It's love fest.
I do think, you know, again, I think that every community, and Jim says this a lot, there are a lot of communities, everyone says, we moved here for the schools and you hear it and like, and you're like, oh, that communities think that they're unique to that. And I think that's true, people spend a lot of time figuring out where they want to live, for a lot of folks. Um, but I do know that in a lot of communities, um, some of the relationships between people who advocate and support are strained.
Yeah.
You know, ma, not, not here locally or anywhere in the Marymount Valley maybe, I don't know. But I can just say this, Marcy Foster's an environment here, is the director of, uh, edu, you know, executive director of special education that's truly special. And her support, uh, and willingness to, uh, work with families, it's remarkable and I appreciate. And her support, uh, and willingness to, uh, work with families, it's remarkable and I appreciate it. And I appreciate, uh, the relationship you have with our CPAC and the work you do with them. It's, um, pretty regular communication, so, thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have homework, you can. Or jobs.
Kids to put to bed.
Madam Chair, can I just ask you a quick question? Is that what we're presenting at home only because it's reversed? And if it's any of the presentations, people would be seeing it reversed, so.
I don't know.
I don't see Brian in the.
I don't see, I'll leave there.
Do you have an aspect?
Dr. Millie, can you just confirm it's this, this projection? Okay, all right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure the audience isn't seeing everything backwards.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt, I noticed that as well, and this was really close.
Yeah, it's really close.
Didn't you guys just present from there too?
I wouldn't be able to see that one either. This is good. This is perfect.
I don't think we need that now, but when the.
I do need a clicker, so I'm gonna, I'm up next here.
A clicker?
All right, well, Dr. Millie attends to some technical needs. Uh, we're gonna keep this moving.
It's just here, that was showing that way.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Dr. Millie, if we could hit the, um.
DM cast?
Nope.
Educator Hall of Fame.
It's gonna go quick, uh, just a real quick note, um. Just wanted to highlight a cou- a couple of pieces. Last Wednesday was the educator Hall of Fame, the North Andover School Committees Educator Hall of Fame. And really appreciate all the work, uh, the school committees done to recognize teachers. Um, I, I don't know a lot of places that have an educator Hall of Fame, um, but it's pretty special. So, um, North Andover just recently inducted Peter Kinkanen. Um, certainly we've talked about Peter at our meetings, he's remarkable. He was an adjustment counselor for over two decades at North Andover High School. And the brilliance of Pete's work, uh, as a social worker and adjustment counselor is he didn't just pull kids out. He actually ran some academic classes that were meaningful, engaging and students were on his caseload. Um, and they didn't even know they were connecting and working on all these great skills together. But more than anything, right? There's nothing more important in this world than a sense of belonging. And Pete gave kids a sense of belonging who needed a sense of belonging, right? And, uh, when you have a school that's run one way on tight budgets for a long time, everywhere in Massachusetts, um, and you have diverse kids, there's not one size fits all. And Pete made North Andover High School home for a lot of kids for a lot of years, supported a lot of families, uh, special education, regular education, mental health, you name it. Uh, truly the most talented counselor I've probably ever worked with in my entire life. So, uh, Pete was inducted, uh, there's Pete right now, um, it was great to see him. Everyone that's retired is looking younger, um, and they've been out a couple of years, I think in this case you have to be out what, five? Next slide. Uh, and then here, I just want to point out from left to right, um, on the left there, there's Hall of Famer Tom McGowan, longtime math teacher. Those were on the committee, you will probably remember when he was inducted. Then there's myself, I have a little bit of a surprise look because. Ms. Da Mong, she is the North Andover Teacher Association, uh, President. At the last minute, uh, I think by accident, she jumped in between, uh, Pete Kinkanen and his wife. And so, she jumped right over to me for the picture and, um, it startled me slightly. But she was great, she gave a speech, it was really, it's really nice when you can partner with a union and work together to celebrate our teachers. So, um, that, uh, that's the president, then there's Pete Kinkanen, his wife Sheila, and then we've got Paul Gregoire, um, longtime English Department Chair. We have his wife, Mary Julie Gregoire, also longtime English Department Chair at the high school. And she's a Hall of Fame inductee, that's Pam Masquita, she was a vocational counselor for many years at North Andover High. Diane Lightburn, Diane taught, uh, you know, really the, the first computer classes after floppy disks where she started teaching kids applications like PowerPoint. It was like revolutionary, remember when PowerPoint first came out, it was a, um, but more than that, um, she taught, uh, tons of skills and also some business work. She was a remarkable educator. And last but not least, Bert Noeys, Bert did 34, 35 years at North Andover, um, as an English teacher and then vice principal. So, it's really nice when you can see the retirees come out. And so, uh, that was terrific. I think the other thing that was great was, it was great to see so many people that come out and celebrate professional teaching status. Um, this is where, what folks used to say, um, in the old, uh, a long time ago, they'd call it tenure. But, um, after three years in Massachusetts, uh, you can earn professional teaching status, which just simply means you have successfully completed, uh, this three-year period and you start your fourth year, um, it's really a time to celebrate. So, to honor them, uh, because all these folks were hired pre-pandemic. Um, they were hired for a job that much different than they signed up for. Um, they were also, um, you know, worked really hard, um, to get to know different folks and connect to the district. But I think the cool part is they all started here with very, um, rigorous hiring processes, demo lessons, direct observation. And over three years, we come together and say, this is a big deal because you've made it. Um, you know, um, not all folks always, you know, make it through for a whole host of reasons. Um, but that was great. And there, uh, the folks who earned a professional teaching status, uh, that night. And, uh, it was a really good night, I appreciate the folks that came to support them and it was a nice night for the families. And Greg Landry did a nice job hosting, so, I don't think there are any other slides. So.
Thank you.
Yes, it was. Dr. Millie, do you want to give us a, um, a quick MSBA update?
I can do a quick one, yes.
It might be quicker, well, I was gonna give it, but it might be quicker than Dr. Gilligan, so.
So, we have, we are on schedule with our deliverables. We did the certificate, um, on time and the, um, membership of the school building committee has been accepted and approved. And we are currently working on the enrollment projection form and the questionnaire. Those are the next two items, they're due November 30th and we're well on our way to completing those. So, we're right on schedule. And there was a, uh, message that went out from MSBA regarding their, um. What did they call it? The, yeah, it gave everybody, uh, concern, uh, but it had to do with their rapid response, that's not the term they use. But it's for like emergency repairs that have to take place and they put a hold on that program, not on the program we're in. So, it didn't impact us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and then we have, um, uh, MCAS. So, we're gonna talk about MCAS tonight, we're gonna hit a bunch of different areas. Um, we're gonna try what we did last time, if it's possible, uh, to see if we can get through the presentation and to take notes as we go. Uh, because there is a lot of different information and we highlight some really key points. Um, but I am at this time going to, uh, turn it over to Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Ms. Maureen Marks.
Good evening, um, as Dr. Gilligan said, he and I will be sharing some 2022 MCAS data with you tonight. Just as a point of introduction, every year DESI uses MCAS achievement scores and other indicators that hold schools and districts accountable for all students' learning. Due to interruptions and modifications to MCAS in 2020 and 2021, DESI received permission to modify the accountability system this year. So, there are no accountability determinations, am I echoing? Yeah, I don't know why, am I too close?
I don't think so.
Usually you can't hear me, so that's a little better, right? Okay. Um, accountability determinations will resume in 2023. And it's important to note as we look through this data that 2022, so the MCAS results from last spring will be the new baseline for that accountability data. They're not gonna go back into previous pre-COVID years. Can you all hear me okay still?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is actually a chart that DESI provided regarding MCAS administration, just to kind of give you a highlight in, in looking at the past couple of years. So, in 2019, that was pre-COVID, so we had full test administration in grades three through eight and grade 10. In 2020, that was in the depths of COVID, there were no MCAS tests administered in any of the grades. In 2021, we had a half of the test administered in grades three through eight and a full test administered in grade 10. And then in 2022, there were full tests administered, administered across the board, three through eight and grade 10. This is also some information from DESI, um, Dr. Gilligan and I attended a presentation and the, these were some of the highlights that they shared with us. So, um, statewide, the 2022 MCAS showed mixed results compared with 2021 scores. Again, we're not really comparing equal kinds of things. But, um, math scores tended to increase, English language scores, scores declined and science scores increased slightly. When they compared those results to pre-pandemic levels, they say we have a ways to go across all subject areas to fully recover learning losses. Helen asked about the term learning losses, I have used the term unfinished learning. As I said, this is a DESI document and that's a term that they were using, so that's why that's there. Um, in ELA, two focus areas were cited as, um, areas in need of improvement. One was the lower writing scores and the other was early literacy challenges. Now, remember, MCAS starts at grade three, early literacy, we're really talking about your K through two. So, just, um, as a reminder, the last time we presented data at the school committee meeting, we shared what we thought were pretty positive results on our DIBBLES based on the resources and tools that we were using, the HEGARDY and the foundations. So, um, we actually saw better DIBBLES scores than we've seen even pre-COVID with some of the work that we've been doing. So, I'm, I'm encouraged that we're gonna continue to see improvement once we move into grades three, four and five and on up with, with those students. And then also, student absenteeism remains a challenge across the board for recovery efforts. And again, this was statewide information. And I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Gilligan for some accountability discussions.
Yeah, so accountability is not something you see a lot, uh, in the news or you see, uh, in other communities. But this is actually how we're held accountable, uh, this is an accountability, it's called percentile rank. And what they do is they take, um, for schools that take MCAS, and in North Andover, that would be our, our five, one through five schools, our middle school and our high school. And they compare how we did relative to every other elementary school in the state, every other middle school in the state and every other high school in the state. And so, um, this is how we're held accountable this year, there is no designation. Like we said, in the, you know, we used to have designations, level one, level two, level three, making, you know, prior to that, NCLB and AYP. After that, we had, you know, significant progress, moderate progress. So, it continues to change over time and just historically, I think it's important to note, um, North Andover, we stuck, we were with the MCAS, uh, until it made that change right, a couple of years before COVID, when most districts were with PARK. So, um, there's a lot of recalibrating. And when Commissioner O'Reilly says, really, truly, this is the new baseline moving forward across the Commonwealth, it, this is the year to start. So, um, that's what these next scores will represent is accountability. So, if we go, yeah, I'm just gonna take you through each school and these are really not for comparison year to year, because you can't really make that comparison, it's a different group. But I think it was pretty exciting to, when you look at, so here's the Atkinson School and so, our accountability rank, right? So, relative, this isn't about achievement, this is how we did relative to, uh, versus every other elementary school in the state. You know, they were at 61, uh, this past school year. So, uh, that's really exciting, this is something we've monitored over time as percentile rank. Um, but really exciting and really proud of the work being done over there. And Maureen's gonna talk about it, but I think it's exciting about the recovery services we've had and the positions we've put in place to make a difference.
Okay, this is a super fast question. So, higher is better in this case, right? So, looking at this going from 33 to 61 is.
Absolutely.
Okay, but we really shouldn't compare that 33 and think we've close to doubled it in four years.
No, but it's, it, since it is accountability, it, it's a positive sign, but you're exactly right in your interpretation.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the numbers and 61 was not 61st.
Yeah, I think one of the things we saw in North Andover and we've seen ebbs and flows, but what's positive and why we show this is this is how we're held accountable. But every single school, um, did better than they had done previously on the percentile rank, even though it's not a comparison, uh, with the highest school stayed the same. And you just don't see that, so, uh, really want to point out that work. So, yeah, they, 61, that means that relative to all the elementary schools in the Commonwealth, they did 60% better than all of the other elementary students who participated in the MCAS. A lot of factors that go into it. I think the other cool thing that some people may not be aware, no one has really talked about it either, is student group percentile. And so, the student group percentile is a little bit different than student growth, it's a little bit different than the old, um, CPI or what we now call scaled scores. And so, they take, um, the student group percentile is much like the top score. And it's how, um, the subgroups in each school did relative to every other elementary school subgroup across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, for example, high needs, and, um, high needs is one that we go over a lot, we used to go over a lot and talk about what's that definition? Cause it changes, the state changes terms. But high needs is where we have a student is high needs if he or she, uh, is designated as either low income, um, I'm not gonna say prior to the year 2015 economically disadvantaged. So, now it's low income, um, or ELL or form, EL or former EL, um, or students with disabilities. And so, once you have one of those categories, you could have all three or you could be in one of those, um, populations, you're, you're in our high needs group. And so, um.
And these are just my standard numbers as we go forward, this is comparing our high needs students at Atkinson to other high needs students at other elementary schools.
Every elementary school in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Relative to every other elementary school in the Commonwealth. And I appreciate these clarifying questions. Uh, the state didn't do a lot of explaining of this and they only went over it a day before they released them. So, um, but what I wanted to show is different schools have different subgroups, there's a different end you need to qualify, um, you know, how many students you have. But real importantly, when you look at the high needs group, uh, I'm just, I'm excited about the trend from left to right, uh, that I see. I think it's remarkable that relative, we might not be at pre-pandemic levels anywhere in the state, but the improvement, as Maureen said, with, is, um.
But this isn't showing achievement in any way, this is just saying how we are compared to others. So, our students could be achieving less highly than they did before, but others, but other schools are achieving even less highly.
Hold on, there is a whole section called student achievement, there's a whole section called student achievement in this presentation. Um, I just wanted to go over this part. And so, now that we kind of understand, I can take us through. So, um, it was great, I mean, I'm just really proud of the work over there. Um, Franklin, uh, they were at 80, their high needs group, uh, was up, um, so really exciting. Um, next is the Kittredge, um, you know, a smaller school, when you only have two, a couple of grades, you're gonna have less ends or numbers, um, uh, to represent, to have groups. Um, but they stayed the same, um, and you'll see their, their special education, um, score well. Then we have the Sargent up, um, as well as the high needs trends again. Thompson is plus five, up to 59, uh, and then NAMS went from 63 to 69. And we're at 65 this year at North Andover High School, which is up. And, you know, the high needs is up again from before. So, this is a little bit just different way to look at it, this is the accountability baseline. Um, and I do think, you know, Helen made a great point. So, it's, it, it is, it's relative to how everyone else performed in these groups, but as a school, um, it's positive and encouraging because you don't see districts that have all the schools up. And real importantly though, the other point is for the achievement, Maureen's gonna talk about the specific achievement, uh, like, you know, um, that is how they actually scored. And it might not be above places we were in the past. So, uh, I just wanted to share that, really exciting, and I'll turn it back to Maureen.
Okay, so for MCAS trends across the Commonwealth and in North Andover. So, using North Andover data, when we look at students who were meeting or exceeding in ELA, grades, students in grades three through eight, their decline is less than the state average by two points. In grade 10, their decline is two points higher than the state average. And you'll see this in some, um, charts following this. When we look at students who are meeting or exceeding in math from 21 to 22, grades three through eight positively exceeded the state average by seven points. Grade 10's decline is just one point below the state average. And in science, when we look at those students who are meeting or exceeding from, um, year 21 to 22, grade five, we positively exceeded the state average by five points. Grade eight, we positively exceeded the state average by six points. And in grade nine, they took the biology test, it was the first year of the next generation science test, so there are no comparisons available. It was the first year of the next generation science test, so there are no comparisons available. When we talk about those trends, we want to remind people that over the last school year, the recovery positions have had a positive impact on student achievement. Some of those positions include additional counselors, interventionists. So we've increased reading intervention at all of our schools. We've included math intervention at our schools. We have increased coaches. We added a literacy and math coach at the elementary level. We added a math and literacy coach/interventionist at the middle school. We also added some classrooms, which resulted in a reduction in class size, so more attention. In particular, at Atkinson School, which was one of our higher need schools and that had some larger class sizes. We added a K through eight math director. We added SEL supports in terms of things like responsive classroom. And as I mentioned, the additional counselors. We added special education supports in terms of ETLs to help interface with our teachers around students that they had concerns about. Not every student who is struggling is a special needs student, and we need to, you know, continue to work on that. So overall, North Andover trended up from the year '21 to the year '22 and continued to remain above the state average in most instances, not all, but most instances. So when we look at the MCAS trends for the state in North Andover, I'm really going to speak to the '21, '22 year. That's where, that's where our baseline is going to be, and that's where we are currently. But you do have information there about the percentage of students meeting and exceeding from 19 to 21 as well. But again, 19, pre-COVID, different situation. There was no testing 20, and partial testing in 21, so keep those things in mind. So when we look at the students who are meeting and exceeding in ELA from '21 to '22, we see in grades three through eight, the state average declined by five points, and in North Andover, by three points. So again, we, our decline was not quite as significant as the state average. In grade 10, the state average declined by six points, and North Andover was by eight points. So that's what I referred to in an earlier slide. When we look at the students who were meeting and exceeding in math from '21 to '22, we see in all grades three through eight, our students did better than the state average. So, and some of them are substantially better if you look at those pluses, so really proud of that. In grade 10, the state average declined by 2%, and we declined by 3%. So that was at one point that I had mentioned earlier. And just, I just want to remind people that when we talked about this last year, we talked about the state anticipating that math scores would rebound more quickly than literacy scores. Literacy, again, is a much more complex process. There are a lot of things involved with the literacy piece. As you recall, the summer after COVID started, we did apply for that Acceleration Academy grant. We got that. We ran that academy for both math and ELA during the summer. And then last year, we applied for Acceleration Academies, and they were offered in math. And so those occurred during February and April vacation, so that was another plus. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a number of our recovery positions focused on math as well. So I think that contributed to some of those positive numbers that we saw there. When we look at students meeting and exceeding in both grades five and eight, in science and technology, both were above the state average. So one was five points, one was six points above the state average. And then again, in grade 10, it was the next generation biology test, so there is no comparable data there. So looking at student achievement, again, reminder, 2019, last MCAS pre-COVID. 2020, no MCAS. 2021, partial MCAS in three through eight, full in grade 10, and then 2022, the full MCAS. But again, last year, it's important to remember that we were still managing student and teacher absences that were pretty significant and definitely impacted learning. If your teacher is out and a sub is in there, it is not the same as having your teacher, as much as we wish that wasn't the story. And when students are sick and missing school or in school not feeling well, before they discover that they needed to be out of school, they're not at their top, top of their game in terms of learning. So that all impacted the learning. So comparing scores is not recommended, because we are not comparing apples to apples. So just a reminder, because now I'm going to go against everything I just told you, so...
Ms. Marks, can I just say one more thing? So it was really hard to wrap my head around this. So if I took the seventh, if I was in seventh grade, when I took the math or ELA MCAS, it was three full years, three full years without taking an MCAS in math or ELA again. And...
And with disruptive learning.
Well, with a, with a global pandemic. But I'm just saying, it's, it's really, that, that really struck me when the state told, you know, specifically when you're talking about that. All right, go ahead, Ms. Marks, sorry.
So even though I just stressed not to compare years, because this is what you're used to seeing, I'm going to just give you some idea. But when, again, when we look at these years, remember what was actually happening in each of these years. And really, the focus for, for me, for our teachers, for our curriculum team, is on 2022, and where we move from there. So, so we're looking at ELA here, grades three through eight, and these are all, all students. I won't repeat that on each slide, but this is all students, so we're not pulling out any of our subgroups here, okay? So in 2019, we had 61% of our students meeting or exceeding in ELA. In 2021, we had 53%. And 2022, we had 50%. So we have seen a decline in the meeting and exceeding range in ELA in grades three through eight. We have seen a steady increase in not meeting. It went from 66% to 10% to 11%. So that's concerning that we see that number growing a little bit. So that is definitely an area of focus. In math, grades three through eight, in 2019, we had 62% of our students meeting and exceeding. In 2021, we had 44%. And in 2022, we were up to 57%. So from '21 to '22, we had more students in meeting and exceeding. And we actually had fewer students not meeting. We went from 11% to 8%. So we saw some improvement there. In science and technology for grade five, in 2019, we had 55% of our students meeting and exceeding. In 2021, we had 49%. And in 2022, we were back up to the 55%. So our 2022 year and our 2019 year did, were equal, were the same. We had a small drop of 1% in those students who were not meeting expectations. We went from 10% in '21 to 9% in 2022. For grade eight, science, technology, and engineering, in 2019, we had 50% of our students in meeting and exceeding. In 2021, we went down to 44%. And in 2022, we were back up toward to 51%. So we actually saw an increase of 1% from pre-COVID times in 2019. So, and we did see a small drop of 1% in the students who are not meeting. We went from 11% to 10%. For ELA, for students in grade 10, in 2019, we had 76% of our students in meeting and exceeding. In 2021, we had 71%. And in 2022, we had 63%. So we have had, we have seen that decrease in meeting and exceeding at the high school level. And we also have seen a decrease there, though, in those students who are not meeting expectation. We went from 6% to 3%. So that's encouraging as well. In math, grade 10, we saw in 2019, 71% of our students meeting and exceeding expectations. 2021, we had 60%. And in 2022, we had 57%. So again, as I mentioned when I talked about those trends, we are seeing a decrease in meeting and exceeding in grade 10. We saw a decrease by 6%, though, in students not meeting expectations. We went from 8% to 2%. And again, I find that encouraging. So, and we were down to 2%, which was actually less than the number of students who were not meeting expectations in 2019, pre-COVID, which was at 5%. Biology, grade nine, all students. Again, there's no comparison for this. It was the first year of the next generation test. We had 62% of our students fall in the meeting and exceeding range, and 5% in the not meeting expectations range. As we look at next steps, we continue to look at trends and patterns and analyze the grade level and school level data to determine what learning needs, need to be addressed. And we do this through the BC data work that I have mentioned at other meetings. We do this through regular meetings with our curriculum coordinators and our principals. We also do this through meetings with our curriculum team, our, including coaches and principals, working with teachers and teacher teams. We also analyze student level data to support those who scored at the partially meeting or not meeting performance levels. And we look to provide tier one and tier two interventions. And again, that is supported through work with coaches, work with our interventionists. And our coaches also work with our interventionists and professional development. And then we continue professional development on high-quality instructional materials and strategies. And we continue to build assessment tools. Things that are included in that are increasing our elementary math assessments, using Eureka assessments this year. In NAMS, we have an additional new math resource. It includes different tools, strategies, and assessments. I have mentioned previously and briefly earlier in the presentation about our foundational literacy skills, the HEGARDY and the foundations. And you all know that we're working with a different resource, so we're doing a lot of professional development around wit and wisdom as well, so. And just want to thank all of our administrators, educators, and staff for the work they do every day to support all of our NAPS students.
Thank you. I think we might have some questions. We'll start with Ms. Bacard. Do you have some questions?
Sure. Thank you for that presentation. I have a number of questions, so maybe I'll ask a couple, and then maybe we'll have a couple rounds.
Sure.
But, so one of my questions is, if 2022 is the new baseline, does that mean that the schools with a lower achievement level will have a steeper incline in future years? This is what happened at Thompson School way back in the day when we didn't meet annual yearly progress, and then we were required to have school choice within town, and da, 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 da. So I'm wondering if this new baseline is going to make a steeper hill for some of our schools.
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, because DESI hasn't shared that information with us yet, how all of that is going to look or be calibrated or anything. What I do know is 2022 is a new baseline, and they're not going to go back to any of their pre-COVID years. But how that's all going to kind of shake out, I don't know. But I'm sure as we get more information, we can share that with you.
Good. And then remind me, is MCAS required to graduate last year? Is it going to be required to graduate this year?
Yes.
Yes. And students who have partial achievement, are they not eligible to graduate? Or it's only not meeting?
Last year, there were some changes, and I don't have all this committed to memory anymore, so I'm not going to be able to give you the specific details. I can go back and get that for you if you're interested. But they, they looked at the competency determinations a little bit differently last year. So that information came out as the year went on. I don't know that there's going to be any differences this year yet. They have been starting to publish some information. But last year, there were some accommodations that made things look a little bit different because of, because of COVID.
Yeah, I would just say that while it's great that, that our meeting and exceeding are, in many cases, up, it's still alarming to me that, you know, in many cases, a third of our students are neither meeting nor exceeding. And I'm sure that's alarming to you. So I just, you know, I'm just saying that. And I'm wondering how that plays out in subgroups. I know this is very high-level information, but, you know, are that, is that one-third of students that's not meeting or exceeding, are they representing our, our subgroups, our high need students, our low-income students, our EL students, et cetera? So, thank you.
In some cases, there is some interplay there, and in some cases, there's not, so.
I'd like something for context, because I, this fascinated me this year. I think it was 2017 or 2018, and I don't have that committed to memory. I think it could have been 2017. But the first year, we had the next generation tests. Massachusetts ranked number one in, I think, the country that year. You know how they come out and say...
I know, leading the nation.
Leading the nation, hashtag leading the nation. And guess what? That year, 50% of the students didn't meet or exceed. It was about half didn't meet or exceed. And so that's just kind of like a starting point. And that was a very significantly different test than the previous exam. And so it's not uncommon when we first start with MCAS, I don't know, back in, what was it, 2002, 2001? Way back then, we saw similar challenges on the test, and we saw that growth each year. But really good answer, Lorraine, from DESE. They worked really late into the year, prior to the public release, probably trying to figure out where school districts fell and accountability was, so.
Great, Ms. Bietzke?
So yeah, I know in the past, you've always added extra support and done things to catch kids up or to address some of these concerns. So I guess my question is, is there anything else you're adding this year? I know we did the Acceleration Academies last year. Is there anything new this year that you're thinking about trying, or you've kind of talked about?
I think our real focus right now is on providing coaching for the teachers and professional development for the teachers. I know since the time I was a principal, probably even when I was a special ed ETL, I talked a lot about that tier one instruction. It's hard, it's hard when teachers have, you know, a lot of students in front of them, and they're trying to meet all of their needs. So really, that's one of the things that we're focusing on with a lot of our coaching, is let's look at the data. So we're looking at student level data. So for example, if they were in your class, and we were looking at a math issue, we might say, these, these four students need some additional support. They're not going to be pulled out of the classroom. I'm not a big proponent of pulling kids out a lot, and Marcy and I are so... So on, so on target with that. And even our teachers who are working with our multilingual students, we're trying to work on more and more push-in, because it really is detrimental to students to be pulled out of the classroom too much. So how do we support those students in the classroom? How do we do some small group intervention? And how do we target that intervention? And beyond that, how do we progress monitor what's actually going on? So we know whether we're hitting that target or not, and not just continue to do the same thing for three months and then realize, oh, that's really not, that they weren't getting it, we weren't, we weren't achieving our goal. So that's really where our focus is now. I don't know, nothing has come out from DESI in terms of any more sort of Acceleration Academies or anything at this point. We have applied for those, those grants before, and we've been very fortunate to get them. We also got additional literacy grant money. So we've, we're applying for one that comes up. It's going to be due in about a week on helping to support more high-quality instructional materials. So we do apply for a great number of opportunities that are out there, so. But our focus with, with the teachers around the students is really looking at those interventions that we can work on with the people that we have now.
Okay, and then my next question's from Marcy to also tag on to what Helen said. I suspect a lot of these will be special ed students. So is there anything different you would do to help those students?
So one of the, I've talked about this before, one of the unintended consequences of COVID was time for students out of the classroom. So something that happened, as we were encouraged to do, was particularly during remote learning, and as students were coming back to school from remote learning, ended up being in a situation where we saw a pretty drastic increase of pull-out services. I've talked a lot with teachers and with ETLs and with principals at the start of the school year, you know, the importance of getting those students back into the classroom, because that's where the magic happens. So it's hard for, it's difficult for teachers. You know, it's, we have more students than ever that are receiving services, that being academic, that being social, emotional. So the push for me and the push that, the majority of the discussions that we have are about getting those students back into the classroom, because, you know, blocks of time went from 30 minutes to 45 minutes to 60 minutes. And again, good intentions at the time, but what happens once those plans are written, as you all know, that's how they're written. So it's, it's sometimes a hard sell to teams, and that being families, teachers, you know, whoever's sitting on the table, to convince them that a reduction in that is better. So that's some education that we're trying to do with families to get, again, for those students who can access those pieces in the classroom, to get them back into the classroom, because that's the impact on MCAS. It's not specially designed instruction that's going to necessarily impact their MCAS. So those are a lot of the conversations that we're having. So that is, you know, for, for us and our discussions, probably the most widely discussed topic at this point.
And is that something you'll look at in team meetings, is how they did on the MCAS?
Yeah, we do. We, we look at that data. We have, again, how we have our, our October 1 numbers, we have just recently been certified. So Patty and I have been working on getting some of those numbers together, school-based, district-based, grade-based, but those are a lot of the conversations.
Thank you. Just a, just a quick aside on this. This was something that was really, made my day one day last week. We have an elementary school student who is, has some significant disabilities, is nonverbal, and had not really participated in a lot of in-class kind of instruction before. We had a teacher and a team and a principal who were very invested in seeing that happen because they could see something with this child. This child is now involved in ELA lessons and participating and learning and communicating with the tools that she has to communicate, and it is phenomenal. So that, that's just a really concrete, specific example of how this makes a difference. And I had emailed the classroom teacher, and I'm a sap about this stuff, but I said, this is life-changing for that student. And that's, that's a kind of push that we have in terms of all of our students who are used to having pull-out services because that is changing that child's life. It truly is. So that's just an example of what we're talking about. Thanks.
Mr. Hicks?
Just a follow-up question to Marcy and to you on that shift. Do you feel like you have enough? Because I don't want pull-out services because we know it's better for everyone, for that child and for other kids, for them to always be included as much as possible. Do we have the right resources in the classroom to support them the best way we can? Or is there additional staff needed, like in terms of assistant teachers and paraprofessionals and whatnot, to make sure that kids are getting supports in the classroom to make that work well?
The most important thing that we have to work on as a district is consult time. So that, you know, we have amazing special educators, we have amazing classroom teachers, but you know, it's the time. It's being, using that consult time with fidelity and working with principals and scheduling to make sure we have that consult time. So I think for now, personnel, you know, we're in good shape as far as numbers. Caseload, caseloads don't look too different. Workload is looking a little bit different. But the priority would be looking at that time that educators can meet to work on planning and getting students in class and having the right entry points and having those conversations. So.
From a district level, what are the, what is the extra resource? What is the thing you need to make sure that you can protect consult time for teachers and special educators?
You know, I think a lot of the times, it's our own educators and it's ourselves. We do extra things during the day or do things on the fly or have somebody come in or I'm going to work with this student during that time. So it's sometimes managing our own schedules. Principals are super supportive of it, but what happens during the school year is other students are added, are those times get taken out by other, whether it be other students or other services. So they start off pretty strong at the start of the year. We start reevaluating things as the quarter goes on and try to, you know, rein those back in. But it's really as teams and buildings and principals are super supportive of it. So it's getting the support of the building leadership to make sure those times are kept sacred for those times, just like the SAT time and those pieces of it.
Thank you. Ms. Marks, we currently use Eureka math, right, for the elementary school? When was that change? When did we start using that? And do you think there's any connection between like that, the curriculum choices we're making and our, and the math, our math achievement being solid, not solid, but like on par and doing a little bit better and holding on despite what's happened with the pandemic?
So we adopted Eureka when I was a humanities director, so it's been probably at least five or six years now. And it's, it could be. Time is all a blur, especially with COVID, you know? So it's a process. Like you adopt a resource or utilize a resource and everybody doesn't learn it right away and you don't perfect that. We're still perfecting it. Like I said, we're beginning to use assessments from Eureka that we haven't used before. And I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Cara and Ben because there are some concerns about the assessments and the way we're using them. So we're going to have a conversation and some things may change out of that conversation. I would like to think the resource assists teachers. Do I think the resource, any resource, is the be-all and end-all? I do not. I think it's teachers looking at those students in front of them, understanding what the progression of learning is for a student, whether it's math or writing or decoding, whatever it might be. So, you know, I have, I have some fairly strong opinions about those things. But I think, I would like to believe that the resources that we have are supporting that for teachers because it's a lot for a teacher to know, especially at the elementary level. We're not, we're generalists and not specialists in all those areas, so.
One more, if that's okay? Similar-ish question, though. We've been investing more time into early literacy program for our kiddos, K to 2. Those students have not yet, have they been, are they included in this data? They are not included in this data just yet, right?
Some of the foundations.
But like our investment, like in terms of like starting with Hegarty and the kindergarten kids?
No, that just started last year. Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
And I think that, I think the phonemic awareness piece with Hegarty has really impacted and helped support the strength of the phonics piece with foundations. So when we just had the foundations, we saw some improvement, but I think the whole phonemic awareness piece has strengthened the whole phonics development. And so that's why we saw what we saw with the DIBL scores that I presented, so.
And I just want to acknowledge Mrs. O'Loughlin at Atkinson, because although it's relative to everybody else, that's still a significant jump and really great changes that have been happening there in the past few years in terms of percentile rank. So kudos to her and her team.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. I could talk about that all night. I wish that one wasn't first explaining it because it's awesome. It's just awesome.
I know you're not supposed to compare year to year, but it means something still, too.
And what it really shows, though, think about it, like we had a really thoughtful plan about where those resources go for recovery and where the need is. And that's why, you know, this is always good, MCAS, but like the formative assessments and those interim assessments make a difference in triangulating that data, finding out the need, and then going and doing it and progress monitoring it and following back up. So awesome job, Atkinson.
Ms. McDevitt?
Just a couple of quick questions. One, you know, MCAS is just a test, right? I mean, it's a, it's a point in time. It's not the only thing that we do in terms of determining our success or not, but it is a reference point. And so it's one of the data things that we have to use. So it's interesting that, you know, we haven't had, excuse me, we haven't had this in the past, but we will now have a new baseline kind of going forward with that. So, you know, thank you for the presentation. It's going to be interesting to see where we go and kind of how we move forward for that. When I look at the accountability, I can't speak, my God. The accountability percentiles and just looking at the elementary schools, kind of averaging them out, we're roughly at about 72%. And so then we go into NAMs and we drop down to 69%. And then we drop to the high school at 65%. So it's a little bit concerning to me to see a drop from our elementary schools and some of them are extremely high, they're in the 80s. And then we're dropping down into the mid-60s for that. So I don't know the answer to that. I'm not going to ask you for the answer for that tonight, but that is something that I think we need to dig into and explore. And maybe there's something that we need to do from a curriculum perspective in order to address some of that. And I remember years ago, in the sixth grade, we saw our MCAS numbers drop dramatically. And so the applied math and sciences class was added in to kind of give them extra time on learning. As a result, we saw those numbers come back up. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm going to challenge you and your team to kind of look at what that data is and help us with that. You don't have to go there, but on slide 14, you know, it talks a little bit about the trends and, you know, there's a couple that are declining with that. The one that I think is a little bit interesting is, you know, we hear an awful lot sometimes of science and students not embracing it and not doing well with it. Our science numbers are definitely higher than the state average at five and six points. I'm wondering if you could just, and you may not remember, but we made a change to the science curriculum, I feel like four years ago, where it used to be, and I'm going to probably be wrong, but sixth grade was earth sciences and seventh was more life and I forget what eighth grade was. And then they kind of changed that. Are we seeing an impact in that? That was statewide, though, correct?
Yeah. There was some flexibility where you taught and what was taught. So we, we are actually looking at some additional resources right now with science and it may involve some changes, it may not, I don't know. But yeah, they worked on that. And then at the elementary level, we brought in mystery science, which is a lot more hands-on, you know, more phenomenon-based. And that's what we're working on, getting more in the middle school as well, some more phenomenon-based science pieces, so.
Okay, that's great. I mean, it's obviously starting to pay off with that. And so that, those numbers certainly look good. And I couldn't remember how far back it was that we went on that. And then Dr. Mill, if you wouldn't mind, just going to slide 15 real quick. So, you know, we've budgeted, you know, through lots of different ways of funding and these positions are now kind of part of the core baseline of our budget right now in terms of coaches and interventionists and all of those things. So again, no answer asked for tonight, but what do we continue on this, right? What needs to change based upon kind of that unfinished learning and kind of coming out? Do we need to pivot now in how we're looking at this? And I don't think that there's a problem with recognizing even halfway through a year. Like this is not necessarily the direction we need to go and change and make modifications with that, especially with some of these coaches and counselors and interventionists that we have coming out there. Because, you know, there is unfinished learning, right? We know that, we recognize that the data here kind of, you know, highlights that. And we're, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, I think we're all in on funding these positions, if that's what it is. I don't know what they are, but it may not be this next year or it may be a portion of this next year. And so I'm going to rely on you and your team to kind of say, this worked, but now we need something different. And it could be level staff members, right? And just changing of what those roles are. But your needs are different because our students' needs are different as they come out of that. And so that's just my challenge to you, to tell us what we, what we need from a data perspective. You're smiling, so I know you already have it, so.
Dr. Millie's going to be gone tomorrow, but Greg and I have a meeting at 10 o'clock and that's what it's about, to start those conversations. So we are on it.
Okay, good. All right, that's it.
Can I just add that? Really good summary of what we had talked about last year with regards to transitioning from recovery services to the long-term plan. And it's just a question of when does that take place? It doesn't have to take place at the end of this year into next. It could be pushed out if it needs to be.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. And it's not a September start. It could be that our students are ready in January and April, you know, whenever it is, like let's, and we'll figure out the budget piece, but.
And I think that's the real, during a time of a pandemic, right? I think that's really the beauty of this team and the work that we did to create a long-term plan with recovery positions. You can remember the Venn diagram of recovery positions that were in the long-term plan. And then the other part was, you know, the positions we need for the future and the ability to adjust and adapt. So it's exciting, but we have work to do.
I think everybody asked my questions. Yeah, Joe, you had mentioned, you know, do you have enough staff? Because as I hear, you know, we want to push in and we should be pushing in for that service delivery, well, that takes a lot of staff, especially, you know, depending on student grouping. So, you know, just, we're supportive of that. We, we need these numbers to continue to, or I guess we're at a baseline, right? So we're not going to say continue to grow. One of the things that somebody had talked about, I can't remember who, when we were looking at the students who are not meeting expectations and especially for grade 10, just to bring the awareness of the, yes, those numbers are not good. And then for those students, the retakes can be just like another interruption of their learning, right? I'm saying this as we're getting ready next week at my school for MCAS retakes. And there are a lot of students and they are large, I know almost all of my English learners will probably be taking it because they need it to graduate. So, and then, and then that's the retake. And then they'll be, like, so we talked about test fatigue and just how the, when those, when those kiddos are not meeting expectations, it just increases the test fatigue and just the time off of learning. So it's like a vicious cycle. Anyway, I know you know that. And I just, and I, and my question was going to be, also when we talked about collaboration, keep in mind the time that is needed. So thank you, Marcy, for saying that because as the teacher who has been the push-in and trying to collaborate and find the time, like, yeah, we're all willing to do this, but our preps don't match. So, you know, it just makes it even more challenging, especially as that second teacher in the room, you know, if you're going into a content that's not your forte and it's eighth-grade math, you really need time to prepare so that you can have really good support for those students. So I'm glad to hear that that's on the forefront and that's a priority because it's not always a priority. And just sitting here listening to it, our, our staff and our students are really fortunate that the team that we have in place recognized that and put those priorities into place. So thank you.
I have one quick clarifying question. Is Eureka math for all grade levels? Sorry, I just rambled and then dropped a question.
Elementary level.
Elementary.
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Okay. Where are we?
Chair's report.
Okay.
You're 45 minutes late.
I know. I was watching the time. You know, they can't all be good, perfect, whatever.
The timer hasn't stood up yet, so you're still safe.
That's right. Feeling okay, Joe? Okay, so.
Could I, could I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, please do.
I have a teacher who's been waiting patiently in the hall.
She's here, come in.
And we were, I know, she didn't want to interrupt everything else, so I just wanted to see. She's a high school teacher, she's up early, so.
Yep.
If we could.
I didn't know she was here.
Wondered who was working in the hall. Hi, Carrie. Come on in.
Are you guys okay if we skip around in the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. So if we move on to new business, B, I believe?
Yep.
So Carrie, would you like to come up to the microphone? And this is Carrie Harnoy. She's a teacher at the high school and she's here to share on her STEM service trip that she is proposing, so to Belize.
And we know it's early and it's not a big one, so it's 2024.
Right. Can I cast?
You can.
Is that impossible to do? Looking good at that. Which one should I choose? This one?
Yep.
Hostile takeover. That's not Belize.
Is that where they go?
There we go. There it is. What's that?
You can just leave it at that?
Well, I kind of maybe, I sort of maybe did that on purpose because the student third from the right is Claudia Mabley. I had a rainstorm earlier yesterday. I was like, oh, wait, I know. But truly, I had taken these students, I don't even remember how years ago, how many years ago, to the Dominican Republic, so that's where that is. And it's sort of a, if you give them us a cookie, like a way I came back to like, oh, what if we did another trip? And so, oh, no. Whoa, that's not what I want.
We're going to run genetics?
No. We could. Go back to that MCAS business there. There we go. That's the wrong one. That's still not it. This is what happens on the daily, you guys. Stop casting my NGSS file.
My generation science?
Right. I heard. I can't get out. Bye. I apologize. And here, so how do I? I'm sorry. I do know what I'm doing. It's just not letting me recast here. Yeah, I'm casting the wrong tab.
Do you want to share it with?
No, I got you. Hold on.
There it is.
There it is. Okay, so it started with a lesson plan. I was prepping a lesson and doing my hall duty just a, it feels like a month or a day ago, I'm not sure. And we were doing ecology. And so I looked up the ecology standards. Maybe it's me. Why can't I? No? Okay, there they are.[1785.94]
Okay, there they are. Got it. Okay, I give up.
Was it linked, Jim? Do you have it?
Does anyone have a hard file? No, I didn't share it because I wanted to click along and take you on my journey. We have it printed. Okay, there it is. So this is a standard that I was trying to figure out, what am I looking for? How am I going to attack this part of our unit, which is basically about ecology? And one of the, it's not in this part of the standard, it was about teaching the students about monocultures, like all of our crops that we grow out west. And I thought of, oh, my gosh, the DR and this Canuco, this, it's a tropical jungle, but it's a garden. So all of these various species grow around each other and support each other. And our kids trucked through so much mud. We actually had trouble getting out of the Canuco from the mud. But, and I was like, where can I, I started scrolling through my phone, looking for a photo, and then I went to EF Tours and looked there. And so I threw another picture of Claudia up there. Because it was a great trip. It was not the last. So the last trip that the school took with EF Tours, my daughter went on. And so not only I, a client, but I'm also a member of the EF Tour Payments. And it truly has been a life-changing experience for her. And so I'm going to brag and entertain you with Evie for just a minute. She'll kill me. So there she is with a couple of the Galapagos turtles, wearing a Darwin hat. And then up in Tequito, where they, in Ecuador, where she was working with a native there. Just this whole cultural immersion. Her one regret here, she grew up a vegetarian, was that she did not eat the guinea pig that they prepared for dinner. She's no longer a vegetarian. School changed that for her. And, and so here she is kind of rubbing elbows with Darwin. And then just last week, she was rubbing elbows with Lieutenant Governor Puelito. So I'm bragging. This is a letter that was written in her, on her behalf for a scholarship. And this is the chunk that I want to share with you, is that she wrote about her trip she took three years ago. And that professor said that was one of the best he's ever seen and based on that was something. So these trips can be vacations. These trips can be truly life-changing. They can come back to you financially in the end, because this one did. But it's neat because I think when we give kids these different types of, types of opportunities to travel, it makes them different travelers. We can go on vacation and we can stay at resorts and we can do all that. But the way these tours are run, they just totally immerse you and they make you wonder. They make you run from dusk till way past, you know, from dawn to dusk, way past. And you're exhausted and you just become a different traveler. I know as an adult, just going on the DR trip made me a different traveler. Like, oh, no, we're going to hit the road and with, you know, and so it's an opportunity for kids. So this one, based on those standards that I put there, is literally conservation from ridge to reef. And it takes the children or the young adults to the high peaks in the rainforest where we, and we just follow the watershed. Could we start at Cannon Mountain and follow the watershed out to Merrimack Valley? Absolutely. This is way more fun. Right? Wait till you see the colored photos. And so what they would do along the way is they would visit with farms. They would participate in research, you know, literally from ridge to reef. So, but up in the ridges, not only are they doing some work, so there's service involved, but they're also going to get to participate in some zip lining through the canopy. Come down to the farms. They do farming. They'll do some cultural development. They'll learn how to do drumming and make chocolate and corn tortillas. So it's just that, that immersion that we can't give them if we, if I was going to take them on the trip. And so I will, the, the nitty-gritty that was my idea was to do next February vacation. Obviously, this year it's too soon to plan, especially for the finances. Those questions, I know, are coming at me. But it does give us time to plan. My target student truly is those ninth and eighth, ninth and tenth grade students, not eighth. Because they are still moldable, they may have ideas of going to Spain or going on another trip later, or I know my own son, hoping to get back to Worlds. You know, so he's, so where we go? Like, are kids that have that environmental interest, like my own daughter? Are kids just, just, yeah, like, can I go, mom? Can I go somewhere? We only need six students to go for one chaperone, twenty-five students. It would be a lot, actually, for this trip, is what I've been told. So that's up to four chaperones. Any takers?
You have to be a student. You can't be on the school committee.
Trust me, my own kids, I have my sons at Essex and he's like, mom, like, sorry, dude. Ninth grade students, again, they're literally learning the standards, so they would be immersed one month before the MCAS. I did just hear the last conversation. Tenth grade students, gives them maybe a more of a taste. They're done with it. They're done with bio, but they know now. Maybe they can make better, you know, kind of look forward. Where do I want to go to college? Maybe this is something. And for those upperclassmen, I mean, my daughter went as a junior, so we know that they, it's fresh still in where they go in life. So what's included, we always have a full-time tour director. In addition to that, it's not listed, but when we were in the DR, we always had a bus driver also. So as far as like having extra adults. When I went, there were just two chap, it was myself, a chaperone, and those two. And that's nice. And sometimes in EF, someone will come on the trip, which could be fun. Round trip flights to Belize, obviously. It's seven nights. The idea would be that we did not miss any school. So the idea is to travel during February vacation. I personally don't want to miss school. But knowing that it could get scheduled on a Friday or something like that. But I know in the past it was scheduled a little bit out and things like that. But the things that are included, so aside from doing some of the work, which I'll talk about, but they do zip lining, Mayan ruins visits. They do marine reserves, the drumming, the reforestation, tobacco key, is this teeny little key out in the, in the, in the reef. And there's the price. So price for students is forty-two seventy-nine. I have more details on that on the next slide. So if you, any of you school committee members would like to attend, the adult price is forty-eight sixty-nine. And breaking that down, oh, I'm sorry, can I go backwards? You know, at this point, sort of looking into that equity and availability, when we talk with EF, she talks about how Boston City Schools offering very similar trips and they're already enrolled. So they're paying, you know, two years out to try to make that bill something more manageable. And it also allows for students to ask for holiday gifts or work in the summer for a goal, to do the GoFundMe and to do fundraising. Our Lilif program has kind of depleted and we talked about that in our meeting with Mr. Jackson about maybe trying to revamp that, but for the time being, what can we do to help students to alter that cost? So that cost is for six students. If we alter and take eight for one, I'm not afraid. I have four children. Do you eight? What's that?
And you're a high school teacher.
And I'm a high school teacher, right? Yeah. It's just a smaller savings. There is a signup bonus. We know there's a deadline, but we're not, I'm not pushing that deadline on you guys at all.
Is that December one of this year or next year?
Yeah, it's of this year. They actually just extended it, but it is what it is. And for every ten students, EF offers a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars, which technically the group leader could use at their distraction. They can turn it into like tip money or, which we end up collecting right before we travel. Or for a scholarship. So there's something, it's kind of built into the plan. Can I entertain you quickly with photos while you think of questions? That's not bad. I mean, foliage is nice. I was able to speak with the gentleman who kind of put the trip together a couple of weeks ago. And he was just super excited. They actually traveled. If you see, they are traveling. They do have masks on. So that's that zip lining. And then down here is one of the farms that they'll visit. And here you can see there's the chocolate making. Another farm. So really kind of getting into the river. So now you're in the valley. And then this is the ocean. They actually do some really cool things. They count manatees, do some reef cleanup. They do, I was just, if none of my, I'm going to guarantee none of my students are watching this, but I was just looking over our test we're giving tomorrow. And it talks about tigerfish, which are an invasive species, and one of our questions on the test is for that. But they dice, they collect and dissect the tiger species to see, the tigerfish, to see what's inside, what they are consuming. And they keep the data. And he said, one group, they found the largest, like they had a record-breaking fish inside. But all that data is going to the Smithsonian Museum, which is down there or something. But they're, so they're assisting in real research, which is a neat opportunity. If a student didn't want to dissect, they could just either continue doing categorizing or do some more beach reef cleanup or count manatees. And then home we go. So some ideas for, for fundraising, EF offers a scholarship. It's a thousand dollars that a student would apply for. With Lilif not being the, there to kind of lean on, I thought of just personal fundraising. So students being able to do their own tutoring, babysitting, doing sales, doing this, the site, like the GoFundMe site. As a group, doing, looking for permission to maybe do a raffle at a game. I know at our last Lilif auction, we, my sister further donated like cornhole boards. Those weren't, those, those are fun. Or have a host a game night, like five dollars to come in and play whatever board games we can all gather. Or offering free classes for donations. As Pam knows, I can do things. Offer a yoga class or if a kid has a skill or whatever we could do for free, come on by, make a donation. And then big communities, community nights, like axe throwing or painting nights or fun things, the restaurant donations. That's what I had off the top of my head. When I spoke with Ms. Marx and Ms. Jackson, we talked about maybe having at least one student, right? Having that kind of a goal that at least one student does have some kind of tuition or, you know, some impact, some helpful impact. Anything I can help you?
I'm gonna guess we have some questions. Ms. Bacard?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Really? Okay.
When do you need a commitment by to know if it will happen?
The, well, what happens is the sooner we go, the lower the monthly prices are. I would say if, you know, by end of year, you know, I think is fine. We would sort of do two enrollments, one now and see what kind of buzz we could get. And then one maybe later in the springtime.
And then how would you promote it? Just tell the students in class?
I would put it out on social media. I would, they, they send me some shipping, like huge posters for the school. I would also try to work with, I haven't even confronted Mr. Concoves, but talk with eighth graders. I was talking with Ms. O'Terry the other night about, even on, on eight, the eighth grade open house, if there was just one slide about student travel, because there's so much travel that happens at the high school that parents can prepare for where their kids and kids can prepare, like, oh, there's these opportunities, you know? And maybe working towards more of having a global citizenship. I know a lot of our area towns have that and what that looks like, but that's a bigger project.
Thanks. Mr. Hicks?
So by ninth graders here, you mean next year's ninth graders?
I do. Brave soul, I am.
No, I love, I love opportunities for kids to travel. I, I, I went to France my senior year in high school on a, on a trip and I still remember the experience. I think it's great that we can give kids those opportunities. How does this, because I don't remember, how does this compare in cost to the other trips that the high school is doing to? Is this one more expensive than the others?
So I did a quick math. I have children going on the band trip in, to Chicago. And it averages to be about, band is about four hundred dollars a day. This is six hundred dollars a day.
Okay. And then, yeah, so just in terms of the cost, I, I.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot. But, so I worry about some of our kids who would benefit and not be able to come up with that type of money. But that's, yeah, and I don't know what to do about that, but.
Same.
As, as Carrie mentioned, that was a conversation we had. We talked about it. And is there a way we could figure out how to do a scholarship or something? Because again, we're looking at trying to have opportunities for all of our students with COVID and some other things that had happened just prior to COVID. A little of kind of that, that ended. We don't have a, we don't have money in there still banked that was utilized by students. So, so we started to have some conversations about some ideas of the things that we could look at because I think that's a concern we all have. It is a lot of money, so it's going to be prohibitive for, you know, I mean, frankly, I think a lot of families, right?
I mean, four thousand dollars for a person on a trip is.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Not cheap.
Can I add one thing, Joe? I don't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to say like, I just remember we had a student come in a couple of years ago. He was a Thompson student. He went on one of the trips singing. And he talked about how it had changed his life, life-changing. Had really never been anywhere. I've been to a lot of places now, but when I was that age, I had never, I thought the end of the state was Lowell, the furthest I had been was Salisbury Beach. So my perspective was really narrow.
Yeah.
If I got outside the Merrimack Valley, you'd get nervous of the car was going to break down and how we're going to get back. And so my only point being that these trips are life-changing and there is no one more committed than all of us thinking about like the equity piece, about how do we do this and how do we do it fairly? And a lot of these are outside of school. And how do we have more opportunity? And I do want to really say though, that the fundraising piece is a challenge. COVID hit everyone hard. So, you know, whether it's our groups like CPAC tonight talking about fundraising or Naprint or Athletics or NAMA, you name it, everyone's been hit hard. The Educational Council, what do we call that, Lorene?
The Enrichment Council.
Enrichment Council, thank you so much. I mean, we have more groups and there are only so many, I mean, we're a lot of mom and pop shops here, you know, in North End. I mean, I'm not sure, like, I can only imagine how many people go to Terry Hollands asking for like, you know, something or the, you know, the different shops. There's a ton of them. But it, it is a challenge. It's a challenge everywhere. And I just want to recognize though, that we're keenly aware with an eye on the equity piece.
My last question is, is EF the best, I don't want to say vendor, but are they the right organization to go through for this type of trip? Are there any other options or is this the right one to do? And the answer can be yes.
For me, it would be. I'm invested in, not invested in EF, but years ago, I went on their, their training program and then took, so there are two of us in the building that go through EF Tours. And we believe, you know, we don't have contacts, let's say like the Spanish exchange where they have these amazing contacts. And in the way it works, it's some sort of miracle. But we don't necess, we don't have that ability to, to do that. I don't know anyone in Belize. I'd gladly meet someone there. But, so, you know, there are definitely different touring companies out there, but at this point, I don't know that one would be less or more expensive than the other. EF was handed to me through just a void in a placement. And so off I went. And it was, it was pretty amazing to see. And, you know, I say like, I compared the band trip to, it's, it's nothing of similar because you are literally out the door and your day is packed. The only time you sleep is when you're on the bus, which is what I. And so knowing as like a personal traveler and a this traveler, the value is definitely there. I don't, I don't know that if another company might be. Because that's what I know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. McAd?
Just a couple of quick things. One to follow up with Mr. Hicks. I think like the Nice trip is thirty-six hundred. So this is about a thousand dollars more for, I think, the same amount of time. And then.
Did you say which, which trip?
The Nice trip.
Nice trip. I don't know about, I'm sorry, I don't know about it.
It's the French one, Tenis.
Oh, oh, Tenis.
Yep. And then this is in twenty twenty-four, so this would be current eighth graders and current ninth graders who would be going, right?
Ideally, that would, I mean, it would be open to any, but that would be my ideal crowd.
Okay. And then one thing that's not here that I would love to see maybe in a supplemental before we vote next week is what their cancellation policy is.
Absolutely.
So usually that, I'm sure that that's in a document that's there, but I always like to see that. And then I think, and Ms. Wietzky might have asked, the deadline for this was December first.
And then I think, and Ms. Vitski might have asked, the deadline for this was December first, is that correct?
Early enrollment.
Oh, no.
Just your early enrollment, okay.
Yeah, rolling. And someone could join right before and pay in full and have all their documentation. That's how it was before.
Okay.
But it really comes down to just being able to manage the, the payments. Obviously, there becomes a deadline when we're buying flights.
That makes sense. Yep, okay. And so you would need six students, and I'm sure that that's part of the cancellation, right? Like, if you get five, right, nobody should really lose money, so that's something I'm gonna look for in, like, the cancellation thing.
That is definitely in the file that was shared with you.
I didn't see it, so it is. That's fine.
I sent a lot of documents.
Okay. And then the last one is, and I, I don't know that we've done this in probably, I'm gonna say two years, but there was a trip that went to Yellowstone, and the students got academic credit.
So they can get academic credit. It would be on your own.
Okay.
It's an two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's actually done, it's not through the high school. It's done through Southern New Hampshire University. I can never get it in the right order.
Yep.
And so that's how they would do that, and they would work with a professor, so they could actually, it's almost like getting AP credit.
Okay, all right. So I think if you could add, add that information in, that would be awesome. I would love to see that.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Everyone, I, I'm going last. Everyone already asked my questions, but I wanna be a chaperone. That looks really awesome, so, saying.
I did chaperone to DC on a trip, so I have experience.
I chaperoned a group of twenty-two students when I was twenty-two years old through EF. Isn't that crazy?
That's amazing. Where did you go?
Spain.
Helen, I think that makes you the most qualified to be the chaperone, so.
There you go.
I just think that's so crazy when I think about that now. I have a twenty-two-year-old.
Yep.
Right.
All right, so this is the first read. We will vote next week, I think, or, sorry, next meeting, sorry.
I will give you back your computer.
And we will, we will get those questions answered for you prior to that meeting, so.
And I'm gonna check before I head out, Mr. McDevitt, I believe that they are in.
I don't, I just did it.
I didn't see it either.
I didn't either. So in the packet called International Travel Program Proposal, that would have.
I think Michelle has it. I can have it sent.
Okay.
But until we had your presentation, I didn't wanna send anything partial that would.
Thank you. I was keeping my slideshow.
It wouldn't, I, I looked at it, and it was really good, but without the slideshow piece, it did, it would have looked like that was the main piece of information in supplemental, so. Michelle has it.
Okay. Yep, it would be forwarded.
It's a PDF, I think, right?
Yeah, there's, I, there's about five things in that folder.
It's pretty standard now, but I just wanna make sure it's there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me cut the line.
Good luck with the tiger fist test tomorrow.
With the what?
Good luck with the tiger fist test tomorrow.
I know. Not me, they need one.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, let's move back to the school committee calendar, March through June. I lost my place. Ms. McCard, I think you had some date concerns, but I don't recall what they were. I'm sorry, I didn't write them down.
There were, April sixth is Monty Thursday, and it's also the beginning of Passover, and April thirteenth is the end of Passover, so April seems a challenging month.
Okay.
And of course, we have April vacation.
Yep. What are our thoughts on April?
We could do perhaps earlier in that week of, I guess it's probably the April tenth, like, we could do. We're not restricted to Thursdays, but that would also be during Passover.
Passover, what about?
Yeah, so then it'd be the fourth, right?
It would also be during Passover, but my understanding is the first and last day of Passover are the most important days.
Yep.
Even though it's a seven-day festival.
Or do we wanna go the fourth? Before?
We could go earlier, yeah. One, one thing I'll just point out, the, I don't think it's the bottom.
Do we have to decide tonight, or is that something we can just?
No. Town, town election is, I think, the thirtieth?
The week before, yeah.
It's usually the.
Oh, March thirtieth.
Last Tuesday, right? Last Tuesday?
So most likely the twenty-eighth.
Right.
Twenty-eighth.
But it's possible to have election on Tuesday and a new member on Thursday.
That's happened.
Has that happened before?
It has.
It's not, it's worse.
Yeah, it's also possible to have someone elected and no meeting until the, you know.
Right. Okay.
No, that's a good catch. Thank you, Ms. McCard.
If it was, if the meeting is scheduled for March twenty-third, that Thursday, if we have to adjust the April meeting, I would prefer us to move the sixth to the fourth and not wait all the way till the eleventh, just to keep it.
Feels more consistent.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a conflict?
I also, I also can be convinced otherwise, but.
No, I, I kind of agree. That's kinda how my brain works, too. Does anyone have a conflict with the fourth? You wanna just write in the fourth instead, and then go from there?
And do we need to hold any additional dates in June?
We typically have two in June. Graduation the second. We've tended to go at the end of the month, just kind of as we wrap up school, but.
Put in the, the twenty-second, tentatively? Okay. Okay.
We just don't typically have a meeting on the Thursday, but the week of graduation, there's a lot of events.
Right.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Too many events.
Anything else on the new upcoming dates?
And just for clarification, the town meeting one, that's just our really, our usually very short one. We have the beforehand and then at-town meeting.
Yeah, just in case there's anything else to be voted on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can I throw a monkey wrench in December? Sorry. I picked up on this just today. I don't know how I missed it, but I have a conflict on the fifteenth. I think we have a meeting scheduled for December fifteenth, and I have a conflict.
I'm having trouble hearing you all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She has a conflict on December fifteenth.
Thank you.
Sorry, Helen.
Do you have a meeting fifteen?
I, I had it as a meeting. Do we have?
We do have a meeting, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep.
I apologize for not finding it sooner. Would the week before be okay, or?
I have a conflict on the eighth.
Okay.
Because I, because we had a meeting on the fifteenth, I.
You pushed it back, okay.
I signed up for something on the eighth.
Yeah, sorry.
I have a meeting.
What about the sixth? I also have a conflict on the thirteenth. Yeah, sorry. Unless Holly, you wanna run the meeting on the fifteenth, and I just won't be here.
Perhaps we can do this through a doodle poll, so that we can look at multiple calendars. I, for some reason, I don't have any connection right now, so I can't see.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that, you guys. I just picked up on that. And then we did decide to keep November seventeenth. It just, it just, you know, nobody could make another day, all of us, so.
I will unfortunately be absent.
We will miss you.
I mean, I think we do pretty well, making sure that we're all here.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's just gonna happen from time to time that somebody's not gonna.
Right.
Even if we plan it perfectly, somebody will be sick, or.
Yeah. Yep, okay. All right. We are moving on to old business, second reading of the fiscal year twenty-four capital improvement plan.
So since the last meeting, I did get a chance to, Dr. Gilligan and I met with the town manager, reviewed the capital improvement plan. She is supportive of it, including the combining of the accounts to give us more flexibility going forward. So I would ask for permission to combine them this year as well for the FY twenty-four request. That just gives us flexibility if one is more than we anticipated and others less. So that's the only change I would ask from what I'm showing, is that we submit it as a combined two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand under the exterior maintenance renovation line.
So the paving and the drainage issues would be combined into the.
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Yep.
So do you need a motion for that, separate from?
Just the motion would say that approve as presented with the change as recommended.
I move that, what he just said.
Great, and I think we just had discussion, or is there discussion further?
And just so people who are watching have clarity, we wanna combine those so that there's flexibility in making sure we can use the money appropriately and not miss out, not have to delay things because we don't have the right funds and the right accounts.
Correct, because if we put just in paving, and it turns out we only need thirty thousand in paving, but we could have used that money for some drainage issues that came up, and we can't because it's labeled just for that use. This gives us that flexibility.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, so are you ready for a vote? Ms. McCard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Moving on to new business, we're gonna look at the budget directives and have a discussion. Dr. Gilligan, do you wanna quickly review highlights, or do we have questions already, if you've had a chance to review them?
Yeah, I would just briefly say that, you know, we have a strategic plan. We've worked really hard. Talked about our goals here, but we've worked really hard on these budget directives over the year of lowering class size, providing the programming needed, the resources, and having the best places for teachers to teach and students to learn. And I'm, these are attached for discussion, the ones that we used last year. And it was a significant change in the sense of, we had lowered some of those class sizes, so.
Thank you.
Making progress.
Do we have any classes over twenty-five?
We have a couple. It's, it's, you know, we had met years ago and talked about kind of an effective zero. You know, overall, the average across the district would be below these, but I think we might have five or six, off the top of my head, that are over. And that means they might be over by, like, one student that puts us over that limit. But it's a big difference from where we were just five, six years ago.
Are those upper-end, those larger numbers at one particular school, or level, or just like here and there?
It, it depends. It's, you know, it, it is actually a couple of places where we have a class that might have one more student, where there might be a lower class. It could just be a move out. You might have two kids move out, you know, and one was over, so now one has a couple less. You could probably balance it out, but it involves, you know, students and emotions and, you know, routine, so. But when we met, I don't know, I remember meeting in the senior center when we talked about these numbers at some point years back. It wasn't that long ago that over fifty percent of our classes were over the limits, and that was with numbers going up to twenty-eight, so. Lorene and I were both principals not too long ago, and it was pretty regular that we tried to cap classes at twenty-eight or twenty-nine. And we had a regular steady twenty-eight or twenty-nine, you know, and so I don't have that enrollment right in front of me. I know we just did enrollment, but we've made significant progress at the elementary school, once the AVAC opened, where, you know, we were at sixteen-point-eight at the Atkinson last year, and a range of, you know, I think up to twenty-two or so at the sergeant and different grade levels. So it varies, just like our enrollment. There's some classes that have more than others.
But just to follow up on his question, are they, let's say it's hypothetically four classes. Are they all at the same school, or are they all at different schools in different grades?
Oh, the, well, if you could think about how many classes we have across the district in elementary, if it's six, it's, it's, it's mixed. I don't know the school specifically in front of me.
To that end, what you were saying about how we've been able to make that change through COVID, and some of the funds that we've had, we've added FTEs, we've added classroom teachers. I would love to see added to these budget directives to make permanent the FTEs, and as Mr. McDevitt has said, not the position, but the FTEs that have been covered by ESAR, to make those part of the regular North Andover budget.
Yeah, I would just say, Helen, again, we've, we've made significant progress. So as you guys know, we, we came in, most years with level services being at three percent. Most years, we've only had a couple hundred thousand dollars for new initiatives historically over time. And so the ability, like, you know, to add recovery positions, two years back with the free cash of two, a little over two million dollars in staffing, then to cover it, this past year with a five-point-three-four percent increase in the operating budget for one-point-one-nine million, covering those positions at a one-million-fourty thousand in ESAR, you know, those positions as recovery, moving into the long-term plan, those FTEs are important moving forward.
But right now, we're still using ESAR money for some of our FTEs.
Yes.
And so that ESAR money will be gone next year. So if we wanna keep those FTEs, we're gonna need to have it budgeted in the North Andover budget. So I would be interested in including that as one of our budget directives.
Thank you.
If you recall, we did mention that we were moving half of those in last year's budget to the operating, and that left the others to be covered by ESAR, with the expectation that this coming year's budget, we would be asking to move them into the operating budget, and it would be another high percentage increase that would be required in order to do it. So that's part of the plan.
Exactly. So I would love to have that memorialized in our budget directives, so that we're communicating clearly with our town counterparts.
This would be something that I would necessarily put in, in a budget directive, but what is the staff-to-student ratio in these classes? But there may be a teacher and a teaching assistant, or two teaching assistants in some of these classrooms. So I would just be curious what that is. I wouldn't want to include what I would consider, like, administrative staff in, in any of those numbers, but who is in the classroom for the majority of the day? Because a classroom of twenty-five fifth graders and one teacher is very different from two teachers kind of in there. So I'm just curious what that is, because I think that that might be a factor in terms of just the staffing that we have to support these students.
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction. You know, the teaching assistants are really driven by the IEPs. So it's, you know, that, that can vary depending on need, and, you know, there are, we have programs where sometimes you could walk in and say, oh, there's quite a few adults here. There's a reason there's a few adults there. Whether it's, you know, multiple disabilities program, we have those needs, so it's something we can certainly look at.
I'm not sure we're thinking of a budget directive, but just, it, to, to think of classes that are over that, if there's over twenty-five with two teachers in the room, right, makes, makes a different learning environment, yeah.
I have the numbers in front of me from October fifth. We only had two classes across the elementary schools that were over twenty-five, and they were twenty-six.
Okay.
So that's as high as they went on October fifth. Now, I don't have, there, there may be a change here or there, but I don't have that. Everything else is, we had, so far, I'm seeing one at twenty-five, and then the other numbers would be twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two on down. So if that helps.
That does, thanks.
That's from the wonderful.
Thank you.
And Andrew, in general terms, we have to drill down a little bit, but just taking the number of teachers and TAs we have and the number of students, the ratio is about one to twelve across the district.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Andrew.
Other discussion thoughts? Okay. We have already checked off letter B. We need to look at C, the color guard MOA with Andover. Didn't we discuss this last meeting?
No, that was last year.
Last year.
We discussed it at the agenda meeting. Is that what you think?
Oh, maybe.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we have additional thoughts on budget directives, should we contact you or email you? you before the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Meili?
Quick summary, for those who remember this from last year, partnering with Andover, the only substantive change to this is that they had, they had in the original arrangement covered the kind of startup costs, and so now we're just splitting evenly whatever the costs are of the program, but that's the only change in the agreement.
Was it budgeted?
Yes.
This was budgeted.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, and it's just a first read?
Correct.
Okay. So we can move on to public comment, and there is no public, is there member comment? Ms. Picard?
Before, just, can I just, I meant to do this during the superintendent report, but just a heads up, I met with Erica Murphy yesterday, and she indicated that they were late in confirming that they were going to be doing the meals, the reimbursement, and it was free for everybody, so that we had entered her budget and approved her budget as a normal year, and this changes things because she's gonna be doing so many more meals, she gets the reimbursement for it, so we're gonna need to change the budget, but in order for it to be effective, I'm gonna have to ask at the November 17th, where we're on, right?
Yes.
Yeah, for suspending the rules so that we can approve it that night. Just a heads up.
Thank you. Member comment, Ms. Picard?
Yeah, it was wonderful that Understanding Our Differences was back at the Franklin School this week, and I was privileged enough to be able to be there as their speaker on hearing disability, the students were really terrific, it was the 4th grade, and they were really excited about ear anatomy and surgery, they were actually really delighted about the idea of doing research on pig nerves, because that's what they're gonna be using to, to replace audio nerves, as, that's what I'm told, so someday I might be able to have surgery using pig tissue to make me able to hear better, but there were a couple of TAs there, and they were just speaking so highly about the district and what a difference the Raze initiative has made, and they were talking about how, I think they said the Epic Read Reading Program, is that, is that one of the online reading pieces, Epic, that they felt like these students were gonna be able to extend their learning and explore their interest in hearing and science, so it was really fun to be there, and I, I just think that's really great, like, all those things were all in that space, you know, new resources, you know, old programming, and just coming back together, so it was terrific, and I'm really proud of those UOD folks, thank you.
Thank you.
And they're always looking for volunteers too, if you wanna help out. It is, it is a fun, fun morning, for sure.
Great.
I have no comment, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hicks?
I don't know if I said this last time, but this morning I got to drop my son off for, and he's in 5th grade at Atkinson, I got to drop him off for math team practice before school at 8 o'clock, which made him really, really excited to be on the math team, and he's a little mathlete, and I love it, but I'm just so thankful that the interventionist there and other, other staff are looking for ways to engage our kids in like lots of great learning opportunities and to get them excited about things beyond the classroom, so thank you to them for that.
Thank you.
They have their first meet in a week or two, so I'm excited for him to compete.
Very cool. Mr. McDevitt?
Well, good luck to William. One, a high and a low, I guess, the high is, I applaud Mr. Hicks because I, I think he has really changed some of the vernacular that we use, and the most common is kiddos. I think almost everybody's tonight said, referred to our students as kiddos, and I, and I always chuckle when you say that, because...
My 10th-grade civics teacher called us off kiddos, Mr. Doherty.
Alright, well, we thank Mr. Doherty, so I do think that that's great. The, the other one is, you know, and Dr. Gilligan and I had a conversation about this earlier today, but very upsetting and disturbing to a degree to hear last night that we did not have busing for some of our students to, student athletes to compete in a tournament for the field hockey, when they needed to travel to Attleboro at Bishop Fian for 4:00, and the request went out for parents to drive students to a tournament, I don't even know what the miles are, but probably 45, 50 miles away for that, and I think we can look at that and we can blame the MIAA in terms of when schedules come out, and I certainly understand that, and I think, you know, whenever we are asking parents to drive students to our athletic competitions, I think it's wrong, and I don't know if the stand is that we literally say we cannot get buses, or we, I know that we worked hard and overtime in order to get some buses there, but I don't think it's fair to families who were then asked to pick students, or conceivably asked to pick students up at, you know, 2:30 to drive them to Attleboro so that they could step on a field and compete for North Andover. So we just hope that we can do better in terms of that, and I hope that it is not a reflection of this, but it, it is a girl's sport, and I can guarantee you that that would not happen with the football team. So for a field hockey team to not, they, they were able to get there, but for the call to go out basically yesterday afternoon, I, I, I think it embarrasses us.
Well, I appreciate your comments, it's concerning to me as well, but what I would say is this, it had nothing to do with what team it was, who it is, there are no buses, we are at the mercy of bus companies, there was an article in WBR today, there are no buses available, and I believe, you know, I think the field hockey pairings came out at the end of the day Tuesday to be in Attleboro two days later, really incredible to ask someone to do that, and I know great lengths of every bus company possible, every coach company on the list, and I also know that they were able to get buses today using our buses from North Andover and getting staff to drive, but I also think that, you know, that, that we should look at then revisiting policies, because I think we have a policy that we put in place when there was no busing in order to drive kids if that was the last resort, so I wouldn't say, you know, it's certainly frustrating, certainly a challenge, certainly the way the MI2A, I don't see any blame there, but I do think when there is, there are no buses, it's known across the Commonwealth there are no buses, that 48 hours in order to get busing to be somewhere like Attleboro at 4:00 without any ability to change time is a burden, so the top priority, I believe, you know, and it's something, you know, I know Steve Nugent takes seriously in chat, is just getting the students there, so I'm glad you brought it to our attention, but that has, to be really clear, nothing to do with any team that had to travel for 4:00 to be on the other side of, you know, Boston for a game, I don't, doesn't matter who you are on that short notice, so, I wish that there were buses, I don't know if Dr. Meili knows anymore, but just this morning, I saw WBR put out there, they don't have buses to be able to transport, and it's not necessarily a new problem, we struggled particularly last year with them drivers.
The, the reason I bring up football is I think they played today in Danvers, and so why were the buses for the football team not offered to the field hockey kids?
There weren't no buses for football today.
So parents drove?
No, they're home.
Oh, they were home today, I thought they played in Danvers. Okay, great.
If we had a bus, and actually, we did have a bus possibly, but at the last minute, but it would've had to leave really early, so, it was great to be able to get the buses and the transportation.
Okay.
But, but to be really clear, like, we value all of our athletes, doesn't matter what sport it is, all of ours, the students, and this really had to do, this isn't a problem that you need to know, so.
Thank you. I don't have comment tonight, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And let's vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
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 And I will also vote yes, we are adjourned at, I don't know what time it is, 9:40. I'm just a little bit off tonight.